To order, I guess, starting next month will be called the Zoning Board of Appeals. So that was a new city ordinance that was passed last night by the City Council. But a brief introduction to our procedure tonight. The Board of Zoning Appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors or peers appointed by City Council to pass judgment on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty running with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The Board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the Board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the Board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand and when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium right up in front here and sign in on a sheet provided. You should then identify yourself with your name, address, indicate your relationship to the property in question, for example, a next-door neighbor or live behind the property, and state whether you are in favor of or against a variance request and give reasons for your opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of the public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once a public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless and responded to a specific question by a member of the Board. The Board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or table action on the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes for approval are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the Board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court. And next what I'd like to do is introduce the staff and members of the Board that are here tonight. First, on my far left and on your right is Stuart Filler, who is our recording secretary. Next to him is Glenn Clark, a member of the Board. Next to Glenn is Michael Bartnik, who is not only a Board member but Vice Chairman of the Board. Next to Michael is Thomas Strat, who not only sits on the Board but is also our liaison with the planning commission. My name is Dave Lambert. I'm the chairman. Next to me, on my right, is Alan Neal, a Board member. And then Bill Fisher, another Board member. And then the last Board member up here is Ken Courtney. Next to Ken, on the right, on your left, is Paul Evans, a city zoning and compliance specialist. And last but not least, Susan Lancaster, an Assistant City Attorney. And with that, we will commence with the roll call. Mr. Secretary?
Mr. Bartnik?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Courtney?
Here.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Strat?
Here.
All right. The roll call's been called. And next is the approval of the minutes from the March 15 meeting. And I know Mr. Bartnik has at least one or two corrections.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert, Mr. Chairman. At page three of the proposed minutes, I, well, I would make a motion to approve the minutes with the following corrections, including that page three. The first paragraph, it currently begins, "Appellant Harry Kwan said." I think it should begin after the city presented, comma, "appellant." So I think that should be inserted there. Secondly, the third paragraph down where it says, "The appellant said the original and existing arrangement was a compromise," and it proceeds thereto. I think the words, two or three lines should be omitted there because it, at least the way it is written into the, we're not looking for a transcript of everything that was said, rather a summary. And I think the words beginning with "to all concerned" and ending with the period above the easement, I think that should be stricken as it, it's not my recollection that that's exactly what was said. And then third, where it talks about, "Mr. Bartnik said the pipeline goes under," I think it should read, "The pipeline appears to go under." I don't recall exactly making a statement or conclusion that it does go under. And then on page, the next page, "The appellant said in earlier discussions on oil," again, there's a reference to something that I said. I don't recall that I was the person that said that. So I would ask that it be corrected to say that a Board member said.
Before I take a second, though, I want to see if there are any other corrections to the minutes. I have one other one, which is on page five. So I'll take Mr. Bartnik's motion before we get to the second with those proposed changes of the minutes. And on page five, the, under, it's like the fourth paragraph down where it says, "Chair Lambert asked whether the property or the proposed southern 170 feet is too small for a condo plan," I believe I said, "for a site condo plan." And that, with that correction being added in there, I'll then, except Mr. Strat's second, any discussion on the proposed, the approval of the minutes with those corrections? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call on that motion?
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Strat?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Saying something at the end, like, "Motion carried," or just?
Just say, yeah. I usually announce that the motion passes, so. And in that case, it did pass.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Courtney.
Before we start the list, item 3C, the petitioner has requested a tabling for a month, or postponement for a month. And while I personally would rather see us turn it down, I guess I should honor his request. And I would like to move to table item 3C until May.
Okay. The motion's been made to postpone action on item 3C, which is a variance request from Minaw Gada and Ashish Manik at 4820 Livernoy. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Clark, was it?
Yes.
Was there anyone in the audience who was here on that particular item? You have a choice. You can either address the Board on the motion to postpone, or you can wait and come back next month. Are you able to attend next month's meeting? Okay. Would you prefer to wait until then to address the Board on that item?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Seeing no one else is here from the audience to address that particular item, any discussion on the motion to postpone or questions? Mr. Evans?
And just for clarification for anyone in the audience, including those who might be watching on TV later, that date is May 17th, 7:30, same place.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Okay, Mr. Filler, we'll take a roll call on the motion to postpone until our May 18th meeting. I'm sorry, was it May 18th or May 17th? May 17th meeting.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Strat?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are postponing action on that item to the next month. And Mr. Courtney, I'm glad you brought that item up at that point because I think what we're going to do, after talking with Mr. Evans and Ms. Lancaster the other day, what we'll try to do is, in the future, at the beginning of the meeting, before we get into the actual business items, we'll address any items that come up for postponement if we have a request from the petitioner. But thank you for doing that. You must have read our minds. The first item on the agenda then for tonight is a postponed item, which is a variance request from Harry Kwan at 38921 De Quinder. And Mr. Evans, could you bring us up to date on this item since last month's meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brief summary, this property involves a site located near the southeast corner of Waddles Road and De Quinder, the existing office building at 38921. The property in question is zoned office. The properties to the north and south are also zoned office. Behind this property, to the west, is zoned single-family residential. This matter involves a separation wall that is required by the ordinance to be between the office use and the single-family residential use. More specifically, it involves the construction of the wall. The ordinance requires that the wall that is required along the property line there be constructed of commoner face brick, of poured or precast masonry, or decorative block. In 2004, this Board granted a temporary variance for the property to allow a wood fence in a section that appears to be associated with a utility easement. That variance was renewed by this Board in 2005, 2008. And now he's in here not to renew the variance, well, excuse me, to renew the variance, but in this instance, ask for a permanent variance. This matter was heard by this Board on March 15 of this year. And the Board postponed the matter to allow the applicant to provide documentation concerning the restrictions on the easement. And so if he's successful tonight, he'll be able to maintain that wood fence. Now, an update to this, our new zoning ordinance was passed last night. That'll become effective in 10 days and also upon publication. The new zoning ordinance does not require a wall that's required by the ordinance that's in effect right now. As a matter of fact, the new zoning ordinance requires landscaping of small shrubs to be installed to separate these. So we just wanted everybody here to know that based on new information, there is an alternative that does exist that changes the requirements for the separation between the office and the residential property.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Evans. So a question I would have for you then, if the Board decided they did not want to pursue another variance on this fence and say, for example, postpone action or just defeated the variance request, Mr. Kwan could resolve this issue just by planting the shrubs that are required by the city ordinance?
Right, right. There's two types of shrubs that could be provided, and that's administrative review, so he would not have to return to any special boards or commissions for that.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the Board for Mr. Evans? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Evans, if I'm understanding correctly, the new ordinance comes into effect almost immediately?
Yes, I believe the law says within 10 days, and we also have to make sure we publish it. So as soon as those two requirements are satisfied, the law becomes effective and would allow him to do that alternative.
And I did see that in the packet information sent to the Board. So if I were a neighbor, if I was in the audience here tonight from the neighborhood, as far as their request of the Board, they could either simply, you know, ask this Board to enforce the old ordinance, which is going out, or, once again, there's no recourse that they would have, that it would just simply be the shrub, the shrubbery or the bushes, you're saying. And the further question is, just from my own personal information, the new ordinance would require bushes or shrubs to be planted how far apart?
About three feet.
Okay.
Any more questions for city staff? Mr. Bartnik?
Mr. Lambert, thank you. I had a question of, Mr. Evans, with regard to the location of the pipeline once it leaves the petitioner's property.
Yes, let me.
Do you have any records that would tell us where that pipeline goes?
Our city GIS here. This is the property in question here. And this diagonal line shows where this pipeline is located. And I can expand this view if you'd like.
Yeah, could you please?
Sure. That's not expansion, is it? So it does appear, according to this, well, this is the city border, so we don't know where it goes beyond that.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, Mr. Bartnik.
Mr. Evans, could you zoom in on such properties as 3945 Wardlow and 2852 Birchdale?
2852 Birchdale, 3945 Wardlow.
Thank you. Any more questions for city staff from the Board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Strat?
Yeah. Mr. Evans, was that an option, landscaping, or is it just, that's the requirement, period?
It's the requirement, under the new zoning.
Any more questions for city staff from the Board? Seeing none, I guess, if it pleases the Board, we'll invite Mr. Kwan to come back up and address us and give us any updates and see what direction he might like to take on this issue.
This correction I have to make, if you recollect, the ordinance section governing one section of the wall, not entire wall. Mr. Evans mentioned entire wall, that's not true. Three-quarter of the wall is built by concrete wall, meaning the city ordinance. Only the section, and the question was whether we don't have right-of-way. So Sunoco has a right-of-way, so we had debacle going on between city and Sunoco. Subsequently, we submit that compromise, and Sunoco approved and built a hanger-driven kind of wood fence cover the easement area where the pipe running, right corner. Those are about one-quarter of entire fence. Rest of them are concrete wall, by the way.
That is correct, yes.
So at the time, city ordinance mandates concrete wall. That's why variance request came from, because we couldn't override the right-of-way requirement, not be built any permanent structure. So that's where we agreed upon, city attorney and attorney at Sunoco agreed upon each other, built a hanger kind of wood fence connecting concrete wall. And also, I have another question is that the new ordinance mandates, that's, by the way, circa 2004. Are we overriding 2004 city ordinance, rebuild entirely thing? And new ordinance, I don't think is effective right of way. When it's decreed upon public and accepted, there'll be a city ordinance. So I think we had to modify Mr. Evans' comment. It is required by ordinance immediately. I have a question in my mind. Also, the issues at stake right now is a section where pipeline going through, we don't have jurisdiction or control whatsoever. That's the compromise we have. Therefore, I submit the permanent barriers allowed to me, because those are the compromise we work out with Sunoco and city, you know, Troy. But I think this is the hearing to follow this documentation where Sunoco mandate no permanent structure can be built upon the easement. I think I submitted one, was highlighted one, and that amendment signed and filed with city, city attorney went over and then allow those build up those hanger-type wood fence across my property to meet both side requirement. What I suggested, what I requested is those temporary permits, nothing we can control with, make a permanent variance at the time when I filed the variance request. The source has been changed somewhat. So I want to rectify the statement Mr. Evans made, make it clear where it come from, what is being requested. Is there anywhere on, Mr. Evans mentioned about new ordinance and we can push. If you look at the contract, that amendment contract, Sunoco allows we can build. At the time, city, no way, we had to build a six-foot concrete wall. Concrete wall cannot be built, and with a wood fence, we look like, you know, those kind of thing. That's what we came up with. We comply with the city code at the time. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Kwan? Mr. Bartnik? Mr. Kwan, come on back, please. Mr. Bartnik has a question for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to the fence, the drawing on page 25, on page 26, shows that your lot is 125 feet across the back. Is the wood fence 125 feet long, or is the wood, how long is the wood fence on your property?
Wood fence, probably about 20 foot.
All right, so other, just the section that's over the pipeline, give or take a few feet, is wood right now?
No section we cannot build a concrete permanent structure. That's why we come up with wood fence.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Kwan? Thank you, Mr. Kwan. Any questions from the Board for city staff on this particular request? Mr. Bartnik?
Just to, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, among the items that was, that were given to the Board members were November 6, 2003 memorandum from the legal department, November 6, 2003 memorandum from the legal department, which modified, I think, the conclusion from the September 4, 2003, opinion from the legal department. I just want, are these, these were placed on our desk, but I assume that they're part of the record, either, they'll be part of the public record today as well as they were part of the public record back in 2003 and 2004?
Most definitely. Yes.
Thank you.
I should indicate, too, that even though we did have a public hearing at the last meeting, is there anybody else here in the audience that would like to address this issue? We would reopen it if anybody's here for that. Seeing none, we will, yes, Mr. Courtney?
Yes, on the amendment to the right-of-way agreement, MAC 426, on the third page, it indicates that Sun Oil's formal approval of plans and consent in writing that they must give. But one of the things it does say is that such consent may not be unreasonably withheld. And I contend that putting a brick wall across, or a concrete wall across, is permitted because I think not to allow it is unreasonable, since they can knock it down if they have to, to do work on the pipeline, just like they can rip up the pavement that exists. So I think the wall can go in, and whether he wants the wall or he wants to wait and do the, do the green wall, I think the neighbors might prefer the green if they can't have the solid concrete. I think they would prefer either one over the wood that exists.
Any more questions or comments from Board members? Mr. Clark this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment regarding Mr. Kwan's, a question regarding Mr. Kwan's comment of city staff regarding his position that there was an agreement with the city that was worked out between Sunoco and the property owner and so forth. You know, once again, I'm still in the dark a bit as to what, you know, the gentleman makes, you know, a certain claim, and I'm not hearing that from city staff. You have provided the documentation that we have on file and so forth, but as far as this agreement that the gentleman refers to, I just need some professional insight into what the alleged agreement actually means from the city's perspective.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be able to try and answer that question. Based upon what my review and my discussions with Alan Moynihan, I think Mr. Kwan probably didn't mean to, but he misstated. There's been no agreement with the legal department, there's no consent judgment. I think what he means is that Alan Moynihan did a lot of research on this file, and based upon what he put in his memos to the Board who was acting then, or in the last two years, those comments were made for the Board's decision. The decision is of the Boards, it's not of Mr. Moynihan's. We haven't been sued, so generally, we'd have to go to counsel to get a consent judgment entered. I think he was trying to explain that Alan did the research rather than that there was an agreement. But if I can continue talking regarding what Alan researched that might be helpful, this particular easement, as pointed out in Alan's early memo, his November 6 memo, does state that it was entered into, I think it was June of 1942, that was before Troy was even a city. At that time, reviewing that document, it doesn't say, it says that there are to be no structures built. Structures, if it were our easement for utility purposes, we would consider a concrete wall as structure. It's not just the agreement, but there is a reference in Alan's November 6, 2003 memo that he actually had a conversation with someone, the manager of the right-of-way department for Sunoco, who clarified that, in fact, if the city were to require a concrete wall, that they believe they had a right to enforce their agreement, and I'm assuming that means go to court to challenge it. So the end result is that we have an agreement that was in place that prohibits a concrete wall. The general rule is that homeowner association rules, other types of documents do not supersede this Board's authority in our ordinances. However, we have a practical situation to consider because if, in fact, this Board orders that a cement wall or a concrete wall be erected and forces Mr. Kwan to do that and Sunoco sues him for violation of the easement, rest assured, we will be added to that lawsuit for forcing him to do something that, we're asking him to perform an illegal act under a contract he entered into back in 1942. So we would be a part of that. This is a difficult situation because we, you either have to look at whether or not the new ordinance should apply, or the old ordinance with something less than a concrete wall should apply. And it's just the nature of the beast. You're not going to run into this kind of situation very often, but this comes up every time Mr. Kwan comes in, and we believe that Sunoco has indicated and did produce a document which says that he cannot build a screen wall, a concrete wall. So I don't know if that's helpful or not, but I did, in preparation for tonight's meeting, talk to Mr. Moynihan, so I was a little bit up to speed about what had been the past history.
Thank you. Any more questions for staff? Mr. Strat?
Mr. Chairman, what, whose interpretation is that the concrete wall is a structure? And how is that, how did that interpretation come about? Whose was it? Who made that determination?
Originally?
No, you mentioned the fact that it is a structure. No, you mentioned the fact that it is a structure. Who determined that?
Well, it's Sunoco's position, and if someone built a concrete wall on one of our easements that we have in the city for a public utility for sure...
Their interpretation is that a concrete wall is a structure, is what you're saying?
We would be very upset if someone's put up a concrete wall on one of our easements. Sunoco is taking the position and made it clear to us that if, in fact, we do require a concrete wall, that their position would be that we're asking him to do something that's against their easement. So it's not just Sunoco, but when we even put up a sidewalk over a county easement, we have to get the county's permission because that's, we need to make sure that we're not blocking anything, so structure loosely would be considered a concrete wall.
So the drawing that we saw that continued down the pipeline to the south, southwest, is actually all those structures that are there, if I use the term, the concrete sidewalk, the asphalt paving, the street, everything that was done within that easement is actually considered as a structure?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that Sunoco, in this limited situation, considers and has advised us that if we ask him to put up a concrete wall, they're going to consider it a violation of their easement. I don't know what exists around there, I don't know if it's ever been an issue. We can certainly check to see if there's some other, if Sunoco's allowed other people to build. We could look at that and see if they have, and certainly get back with Sunoco. But I'm talking about the limited facts before this Board, they have told us that they're going to consider it a structure.
Okay. Mr. Neal, you have a question?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. It dovetails to what you just spoke to. It's, my great confusion on the matter is the language that's at the bottom of the November sixth memo from Mr. Moatsney, where it's, it refers to land being built upon, paved, or surfaced otherwise than with earth. And then it also goes on, on the next page, to limit the planting of trees with sizable root structure. My great confusion on this enters into is that the property to the north, northeast, is a paved parking lot, and I understand that Sunoco is saying, in this particular case, we'll sue, maybe. But they've obviously allowed someone to put a parking lot over the top of it. And if you look at the use of that property, obviously, to make it work, you, you need to put the parking lot there. So my question is, from a legal point of view of, let's say, defending our interests as a city, if it came to that, the fact that they've obviously allowed, either by not calling the issue legally, or actually entering into some maybe other agreement that we're not aware of, the fact that they obviously allowed pavement and other structures to be installed, would that be a defense that would close out this issue?
Well, certainly, it's something that could, we could argue. The courts are allowed, of course, a judge would make up their own decision as to what they considered. I don't know if they would look at the equities that the easement was there before nineteen forty-two, or if that would be something that the court would distinguish as different, is a sidewalk different than a concrete wall? I mean, there are, those are loose issues that we certainly could argue.
Yeah, my confusion is that in the case of the north, we have an asphalt parking lot, which I believe has a drain structure in it too, are familiar with that property, so that's far more sizable than a wall. And the way the new ordinance is written, it seems that the language in the top of page two of this memo implies that we really couldn't put shrubs there. Aren't we talking about an arborvitae or something that grows about five, six feet in height?
Right.
It sounds like the root structure of that would not be suitable.
Well, I'm not sure I know very much about root structure, but it, something tells me, and maybe one of you can remember, because I did read these documents, that at some point, Sunoco did talk to us and said that they would be okay with trees, and that was a long time. Did anybody else remember reading that somewhere in one of these documents? But they just didn't want the cement wall. So the issue becomes is, I mean, certainly, this Board has the discretion to do whatever it wants, it's just that it's, it might, and it, Sunoco, you're right, may not do anything. It would be up to Sunoco to decide whether or not they were going to sue Mr. Kwan and add us in, or if Mr. Kwan was going to add us in, so those are all things that, and I'm not sure the court, we could use looking at the other properties for parking lots and things to determine if maybe that's a good argument, and I think it's a reasonable argument. Courts sometimes look at whether or not those are moot issues because the property's different, or there's no screen walls involved, or, so it's, there's just a lot of open ends, but certainly, it would be an argument we could make.
Thank you. Mr. Bartnik, did you have a question?
I was going to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
With regard to the request for a permanent variance, I would move to grant the permanent variance, variance to install, or to keep the existing fence in lieu of the high, six-foot high masonry screen wall for the thirty-five-foot-long portion that is existing right there. And the preliminary findings would be that the variance is not contrary to the public, not contrary to the public interest. It does not permit the establishment of a prohibited use within the zoning district, it does not cause an adverse effect to properties in the immediate vicinity or zoning district, and it relates only to the property described in the application for the variance. Secondly, for special findings, the petitioner has a following practical difficulty, namely, item A three, conforming is unnecessarily burdensome, and variance is not excessive, and the practical difficulties result from the following unusual characteristics of the property, specifically, the private easements that are recorded with the Oakland County Register of Deeds as of nineteen thirteen and nineteen forty-one, I'm sorry, nineteen forty-two, which are attached to the November third, two thousand and three memo that's in the file.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Bartnik to grant the variance. Is there a second, or any further discussion?
A second.
Mr. Neal has seconded the motion. Any further discussion on the motion that's been made and seconded? I just had one concern, and I, I could certainly understand approving the motion, I, my preference would be to see trees in there or shrubs of some type, because I think it'd look a lot nicer than that wooden, that wooden fence in there, which has, requires maintenance, and in addition to that, it's not exactly a very pleasing thing for the eye. So that, that would be my concern about the motion, that I would prefer to see the shrubs in there instead, but that's my own particular reservation about the motion. Any further discussion? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern is the same as yours, and if it's, if I'm understanding this, this new territory we're launching into as far as a new zoning ordinance, once again, if Mr. Bartnik's motion is approved, the gentleman would be able to keep the fence, and I'm not sure to what end maintenance and so forth would be kept up. So, you know, unless one of my colleagues on the Board can convince me otherwise, I think, I believe I'm going to vote no on the motion, simply because I think the neighbors would prefer, and based on the correspondence we've seen before, something else there besides that, that fence. I understand the complexity of the issue here, it's not an easy decision, and our city attorney, I made reference to that earlier, but I just think at the end of the day, keeping that ugly wooden fence, which will continue to deteriorate, and I guess it's really also a question for maybe City Staff, is, you know, if this motion is approved, at what end, you know, what, is there ever an end to the wooden fence in that regard, as far as maintenance and upkeep and so forth?
Well, essentially, there are codes that do exist that regulate all wooden fences in the city, so regardless of what this motion might say, if he gets to keep the fence, he's got to keep it in excellent condition.
And if I could just go further, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm an expert in fence inspection, I drive, I live just south of that, you know, miles south of that neighborhood, or that area. Whatever the current condition of that fence is right now, if I were living in those beautiful homes that, above that property, I wouldn't be happy with the current condition of that fence, let alone any further condition which would probably be going downhill. So once again, I believe I'm going to vote no on the motion. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing, oh, Mr. Neal?
I would only add that even if you go with a, you know, some sort of tree or brush type of, you know, visual break, that still requires a maintenance activity, too. I don't think we're going to really get away with that. I think from a uniformity perspective, the best option that I see, for me visually, is to have a masonry wall, because that's what you just have along there. It seems that Sunoco being unwilling to, well, in my opinion, be reasonable. I find it hard to, I find it personally hard to ask the property owner to remove the fence and then spend additional cost, put in shrubbery, so my basis for supporting the motion is that it seems like it's about the best that we could expect to ask for in this situation.
Any further discussion on the motion? We're ready for the roll call, then. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Uh, no.
Mr. Strad?
Sorry?
No.
Was that no? Correct. Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
No.
Mr. Courtney?
No.
The motion is... It fails three to four. Yep, motion fails. Any further action on this item from the Board? Mr. Courtney?
Chairman, the, the discussion about Mr. Moatsney's memo occurs, his memo occurred before the amended right-of-way agreement, and the amendment does state that they have to, that he, Mr. Kwan would have to submit his request, and that they cannot unreasonably deny it. And I contend that he can submit for a concrete wall, and they should not be, under that agreement, they should not be denying it. But if they do, I would, I would still much rather see shrubs break the continuity, shrubs would look better than wood breaking the continuity.
Mr. Evans or Ms. Lancaster, can you give Mr. Kwan his alternatives now with the action of the Board and with the new ordinance coming into effect here in approximately three, three to four weeks?
Right, the new ordinance would allow staff to approve certain types of landscaping to go along that property line. When the use between office, and this is the new ordinance I'm showing everybody, and use group one, the residential use is, asks for screen alternative one or alternative So screen alternative one, are smaller bushes spaced three feet apart, as indicated here, and screen alternative two, actually does allow a bit larger trees spaced a little further apart. So actually, he's got two options. Part of the reason why I didn't mention the second option is because I, in looking at the documents filed under Alan Moatsney's memo, it talks about trees can't be put in, large trees. But he does have those two alternatives, and I would have to say if he puts those where the break in the wall is, administratively, we could approve him to do that.
Okay. So he should probably contact your office maybe tomorrow to, or sometime this week to make arrangements for the permitting process?
Right, the variance has expired, so he ought to contact our office soon and get things moving along on that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, he may also call Sunoco and see if they're willing to either allow a screen wall based upon his request tonight, which was denied, or talk to them about the trees.
Okay, thank you. Any further action or questions from the Board on this item?
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Kwan, come on up.
I have a question. If we built a shrub, are we going to build entire one-hundred-and-twenty-foot fence, knock down the concrete wall, build a fence, shrubbery or wood, whatever? What about our neighbors? They built a concrete wall. They have to knock down and build, you know, shrubbery there?
What's your question?
No, variance request is just wooden wall.
Right.
Containing that entire concrete wall.
No, just, the area, the concrete is compliant, and even though the code changed, you're still grandfathered in with that concrete, so you can leave that there, you don't have to do any changes to it. The only area...
Wood fence, okay, then I have to get Sunoco's permission whether we can do it or not. If they say no, we are a block. You are aware of that, right?
Well, I think that would be a separate matter, under the new ordinance, that if it does come up, we'd have to examine it possibly under different circumstances.
Sunoco prohibit building any shrubbery because grew deteriorated pipeline, then objected, what would you like to do?
I think it's too early to say. I think we need to determine what's an appropriate shrubbery, and determine if Sunoco's going to approve it. So I purport that that's perhaps a bridge that we might not need to cross.
So then, I need your letter from New York, I can forward to Sunoco, depending on their decision what they're going to...
Sure, we can provide you with the sections of the ordinance that gives the standards, you can come up with perhaps what, what you'd like to put in, and we'll take it from there, we'll work with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kwan. Okay, with that, we will move on to the next postponed item, which is a variance request from Monsignor Zohar Toma Kajbo, and hopefully, I didn't massacre that name as well, at twenty-four forty-two East Big Beaver Road, Saint Joseph Caldean Catholic Church. Mr. Evans, could you present the facts of the matter to us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located on the south side of Big Beaver, between John R. and Dequinder More closely, you can see the church here, surrounded by the red outline. This property has a dual zoning, single-family residential in the yellow and multiple-family low-rise in the brown. The property immediately adjacent to the west is also zoned multiple-family low-rise. This matter involves the installation of certain accoutrements between the west wall of the, of the church and the west property line. More specifically, it involves the addition of a vestibule in this area here, along the west of the church. And this drawing here, we have Big Beaver at the top, they're also asking to put in a driveway through this area here and install some landscaping. There's a close-up of what they want to do. Now, these improvements to the property are required to get special land use approval from the Planning Commission, and they were heard by the Planning Commission on January eleventh. The Planning Commission did not take action on this to allow the petitioner to consider the variances needed to approve this request. This matter was originally on the March fifteenth agenda of this Board, but due to the fact that we had less than a full Board present, the proponent requested a postponement to today's meeting. The variances involving the area of property in between the west wall of the church and the west property line, also along this west property line. Now, what the ordinance says basically is that churches need to maintain a fifty-foot setback for everything adjacent to any property line, including this west set, west property line. Now, when we say setback, we mean that there can be, the ordinance says, rather, there can be no driveways, no buildings, and another section of the ordinance says that it must remain landscaped space. So by installing the addition in this driveway, they need variances. Specifically, they need an eight-foot variance from the... variance from the fifty-foot setback for the vestibule, a forty-three-foot variance from the requirement that this driveway be fifty feet from that west lot line. And another section of the ordinance says that a landscaped berm needs to be provided between any driveways on the site and the west property line. And while they are proposing significant landscaping, there will be no berm there. So, in order to proceed with the Planning Commission, they're gonna need to receive variances from the board tonight, and that's the nature of their request.
Any questions for Mr. Evans from the board?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Neal?
Mr. Evans, can you go back and give us a rundown of the zoning for the property again? And then, the question that I ask is, is it conforming for the use, or is there been some leeway granted?
Well, the zoning for the property is residential, single-family residential on this portion, and multiple-family low-rise on the brown portion.
Religious facility, that's allowed?
Right.
I wanted to make sure.
Yes, as a matter of fact, they did receive a special land use approval sometime back, years ago, for this.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Any more questions for the city staff? Mr. Bartnik?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have any information as to the ownership of the property immediately south of the petitioner's property?
Well, in the application, I didn't receive any information regarding the owner, but we could provide the board who owns the property south, or show you maps. What kind of information specifically did you-
I guess, sometimes, the reason why I'm asking is it appears to be vacant land according to the map, and when you go out there as well, it appears to be vacant land. On some of the other parcels that come in front of us, you know, we learned that that piece of property is owned by the city, for example, or it's owned by a developer, or it's just owned by a private individual that has no plans for that property. Do we have any information, public information along those lines?
I should be able to look that up as we proceed with the meeting, if you'll allow me a few minutes. Perhaps we can proceed with other portions, and I'll get those answers for you.
Any further questions from the board for Mr. Evans? Mr. Clark?
Mr. Chairman, just one question. Could you go back to the, the diagram of the property with the, I think, the red line? Is the, is it my understanding that the, the red line is the wall, the masonry wall that's-
A lot of it is. I was on the site, and a lot of the, this portion is a masonry wall. And perhaps the applicant can confirm the extent and condition, or whatever questions you may have about that.
Okay, so I believe it is, because I live, that's my precinct, I vote there. And so, I didn't look for that when I was there regarding this petition, but I would just be curious, and I'm sure there's people-
Love the one facing-
Right, sure, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from the board for city staff? Seeing none, we'll have the petitioners come up and present your case. And once again, I apologize if I mispronounced your names, so.
Good evening. My name is Gassan Abdnou from JV Associates Architect. I'm representing Father Monsignor Kajbo for the project tonight, and I'd just like to go a little bit through the, kind of, some of the issues we were going through to come up with, with that project. Like we know, I mean, when we first started the project, I was, I met with Father Kajbo, and we were talking about the issues for the circulation on Big Beaver, because of the traffic coming inside the parking lot and going out, and there was a lot of big problems for a long time. And as the community was growing in the area, a lot of, the church was trying to solve it a lot of in a different ways. First, you know, Father Monsignor Kajbo will talk about it later, but some of it is, they tried to work a little bit with the masses between, the time between the masses, so they let the people go out and the new people come in, because I think there's three or four masses every Sunday. And still didn't do a lot with the community. And actually, the Caldean Church bought another church on 16th Mall and Mount, so they can maybe divide a little bit the population going to the church. And it seems like the issue still, I mean, it's a little bit better, but still occurring on Big Beaver, and they're having a lot of problems. The reason why, I think, the reason why the big issue is, on the site, there is two way to go out and one way to come in. And the problem is not we don't have enough parking on the site. We have 321 parking, and it's equal to 800 people in the church. So, actually, there's enough parking for the people if the, the church is filled. The issue is, between people leaving and coming in, there's not enough time to fill the parking, because there's two, I mean, two exits and one entrance, and it's taking too much time to fill the parking, to people to come in, fill the parking, and go to church. And that becoming an issue. We talked about it, and we met with the, with the city planning department and the building department, and some recommendation came in, and we talked to the police, and the issue came that, let's try to see if we can propose for another entrance on the west side of the property. So, actually, two entrances come on the west side and two exits on the east. And this is where the project start coming in. So, and we went through the planning department, Mr. Start was there, I mean, he was familiar, and we got like some kind of, I mean, a lot of different talk was into that issue. And some of it is how to make the circulation inside the parking lot and maybe try to open the landscape area at the center. And we tried to work on it a little bit, and maybe we're still willing to work on that, because as you suggested in the meeting. But the issue is coming into the site, and especially at the front of the, at the door, the front door of the church in this area, there is one line that when the elderly come in in their cars, the people drop them off. And so, you start having lines, even though there's a road next to it, so they come in, but you're still kind of having a conflict in that area. And when we submitted to the planning commission, we showed the driveway and we showed the drop-off area in the back, on the west side. And most of the recommendation came from the neighbors and from the planning commission to actually cancel it, because they thought that if we have a drop-off area in, in the west side, we're gonna have the same issue. So, Father Monsignor Kajbo decided to take it out and not to show it, to work actually with the, I mean, some of the ideas came from the neighbors in the meeting and with the planning commission. So, actually, we revised that, we took it out. And they had some other suggestions to curve the street. The curving the street in a way, so actually, when car comes in, and what, I mean, usually it happens on Sundays, that most of the masses is during the day, so we don't have, unless you have major holidays, the light, if the car coming in, so when curving, doesn't go directly to the, to residential in the back area. So, we worked on that, and also was suggested to add more trees, actually on the south side, facing the driveway. And we did that according to, after meeting with the planning department and the city. And we can add as much as required to solve that issue, too. And also, we suggested to put a photometric plan, photometric plan to show that there's no lighting go beside, I mean, over the, the wall, the fence wall, the concrete wall. It is a concrete wall on that side. And we submitted the photometric for the lighting with all the, what's required by the city code, with all the, kind of, the lighting has, like, they don't let the light go to the neighbor's side. And that's really, we've been trying to go back and forth, trying to solve that issue. And our hardship is, is we always having on Sunday, it's an issue on Big Beaver, and we have always police trying to make the traffic work. And really, that's why we're here. For the, for the entrance and the back wall, for the vestibule, this is just, we wanted to put a cover in case if somebody goes out, but that's not a major issue we have. It's just to put a cover for the, for the doors. But the main thing is for us is really the, the street coming in. And I just wanna let Monsignor Kajbo say something about the project, and I will be here for any questions you have.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Monsignor Zohar Kajbo. I am the pastor of St. Joseph Caldean Catholic Church on 2442 East Big Beaver Road, Troy, Michigan. We experienced some hardship for people coming into the church and leaving the church. We tried to address the issues that resulted from a large number of Christians practicing their faith in that particular church. We spaced the services in a way better than it was before. We added, put additional services so that there is no congestion of congregation in one particular time. And in the last five years, three more churches were built in the neighborhood to serve the growing Caldean Catholic community in the area. The problem or the issue particularly is the congestion of the traffic on Big Beaver Road coming into the church. While there is, according to the code, 800 people is the capacity of the church, that takes, requires 267 parking spots. The church has on-site 321 parking spaces. And on occasions, these space, these spaces are filled, not because more people are getting into the church, but particularly these days, three or four people from the same one family attend mass. Each one is traveling in their own vehicle because after the service, they are going to different destinations and to do their other works. In order to ease the pressure on Big Beaver, which is causing a great hardship for the neighbors and for the churchgoers as well, we tried to explore possible solutions. We engaged consultants, including an architect and an engineer, and we started looking at the site, traffic reports and the like, to explore what are the best ways of getting faster the people sitting in their vehicles coming to the service, to get them off the road on the site. Other attempts were made to look into the possibility of widening the entry and allowing only one exit, which currently, because of people leaving the premises, cannot move to the second line in the, in the road. They have to definitely take the extra left lane when they exit the premises. So, we engaged consultants, prepared proposal to install that additional driveway. We approached the city planning and got there some input, and to see what are the best approaches to it, we submitted an application. We appeared here for the public hearing on January 11, 2011. Both sides spoke on the pros and the cons. We took on board all the comments and the questions into consideration. Our original plans were modified to reflect all these comments. We deleted parts of what was proposed because it conflicted with the interest of people here present, and there were objections to it. We tried to accommodate all these comments. We submitted the amended proposal, and matter was scheduled for a future date. On February 24, when the note from the city went out, a parish member physically went to the condo complex next to the church to attain contact information on the, on association representative. She was given the name of Mr. Richard Kyle. She contacted him. He then proceeded to contact the condo association president, Mr. Bob McTherson. Our intention was to meet with the residents to hear their consens, concerns, and answer any questions that we could. Richard informed us that meeting was held, the association meeting was held already on February 28, and March 28 was the next scheduled date. We expressed that we were willing to attend that meeting to explain, to, to explore, and to listen. In the meantime, St. Joseph, we put together a letter that welcomed all residents to attend a meeting to be held at the parish center on March 12. Invitations were mailed to residents or occupants of surrounding properties near the church. What prompted this meeting was two facts. One, that the hearing was upcoming on March 15, only three days from there, and the association meeting was not until the 28th. So, we wanted to do something to establish contact with the neighbors leading to the meeting. Five residents were in attendance of, out of some 80 invitations that were mailed, five returned because the residents were vacant. The main issues discussed were parking, which came as surprise to us, because this proposal was not about adding or modifying any building, or adding or deleting any parking. It was actually, not, nothing to do with parking spaces. Blueprints were presented to those who attended the meeting. We heard to, listened to many comments were made during the one hour, an hour and a half of that meeting. Before the March 15 public hearing, we were informed by the city that the, not all board members will be in attendance of that hearing. So, after careful consideration, St. Joseph requested postponement of the hearing to the next scheduled meeting, which is today. Our understanding was, we would attend the 28th March condo association meeting. When a parish member called the, on that Monday morning to confirm our attendance, there was a misunderstanding. She was told that it was too late to include St. Joseph on the agenda for that meeting. The association stated that the church did not confirm earlier that month. Again, there was an understand, a misunderstanding. We were graciously put on the agenda for April. On April 13, a letter from Mall East Home Honor Association was received by the church. It had, it included six questions, the same questions that we were addressed during that March 12 meeting. If you deem it necessary, I will be more than happy to answer those questions now. The purpose of installing that additional driveway, as we can imagine and realize, that two entries compared with two exits will balance things. One entry can get one car off the road, two entries can get two cars off the road at the same time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions from the board for the Monsignor or the other representative for St. Joseph? Mr. Bartnik?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not, it's not clear to me from your comments and from the architects' comments, are you indicating that, that you've, that the petition has been changed to omit some of the driveway, or is the petition the same way as it appears right now? I'm not sure. I didn't quite understand what change has been made, if there has been a change.
Yeah, the, the original petition, sorry.
No, no, there's some part of the petition was changed, like, we had, we used to have a drop-off area in the back area on the west side. We took it out.
So, so, for example, is this drawing the-
This drawing is right. This is the new proposal.
This is the new proposal.
This is the new proposal.
So, they're under the-
Just little fixing, after talking, I mean, some of the neighbors comment and the planning commission comments, we did some kind of revisions to, to the plan, so.
Is this the same plan that was on the agenda for March?
No, it's changed.
It has changed.
No, sorry, for March it was.
Oh, for March, yeah, but for the planning commission was changed.
Yes.
But the, the papers that were presented to the zoning board of appeals for the March zoning board of appeals meeting, those are the same papers as we're looking at today?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, thank you. Because I, well- Because I, well, can I ask another question?
Go ahead.
Because, because I was out there at the property then prior to the March meeting and it just appeared to me that, that the, the homes there to the west of, of your property are very close to the proposed driveway and I can see why that is a concern of the neighbors there, whether it's the condominium association or, or just the four, five, six, seven, eight or nine homes that are right immediately west of your property. I can, you know, from my perspective, when I visited that day, I can see why they would be very concerned about a driveway being put there. And I was wondering if you had any comments to address that now?
Well, first of all, I am very grateful to the input the neighbors and the residents had into this proposal because actually we are trying as a church to be very sensitive to the needs and the feeling of people that we have years and years to live side by side with each other and the church will be the last thing to do anything to affect or to in any way trespass over the rights and the comfort of the people in the neighborhood. We try to minimize any discomfort caused. In a place like this, it is a couple occasions in the year, Christmas and Easter, for all other places of worship and we regret any inconvenience that is caused on any of these occasions. It is in our interest that we maintain a wonderful relationship with everyone in the neighborhood. And like I said, I am very grateful for their input. We were able, after those remarks that were made both in the meeting and also at our meeting on March 12, to take into consideration the deletion of that drop-off, the increase of the landscape. We tried actually to reflect in the amended plan that we are taking seriously all the concerns of the neighbors and addressing it with the intention of solving it.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Is it, is it possible to, I don't know what you've considered and maybe you have already considered them, is it possible to put a vestibule instead of on the west side, to have an entrance or vestibule and drop-off point on the north side? That way you might have a, the, the new west driveway, but it would not be going along the west side of the building. It would be another drop-off maybe for the elderly or the, those that need wheelchairs on the north side of the building. Is that, is that something that's been explored?
Well, it has been explored, but knowing the physical positioning of the building, how it started, it was an Anastasia Roman Catholic Church where it says now sanctuary, the classrooms, the lower part of the church. Now, the shaded area just above that is the current entrance and unlike all churches, the side, the entrance is in the middle of the church and it goes sideways. So while there is no entry, neither from the back nor the side, there is one there on the north side and the main entry is now on the south side but undercover and it is through another building. So it is not a separate entry. It goes through another building before you get into the church. That part was added in 1996.
You mean the north part that says sanctuary was added? Where, if I may, where is the altar and the, the pews? Where are they?
Okay.
Do you have a pointer or something?
There is no pointer here, but see, you have the dome and the arches on, on the side, yes, where the arm is. That is the sanctuary and the altar is there. The pews are facing east. And that's the whole, one of the things that was taken into consideration, a Caldean church need to be facing, the altar need to be facing east. This is why they put up with so much hardship actually even in the design just to, because of the limitation that we're on the sp, on the land. So the pews are all facing east and so is the altar on the east side of the, of the church. If you can change to the other page, it shows it clear.
Mr. Bartnik, are you asking why we didn't, we were not making the, the north entrance as a vestibule?
Yes, is, is there a way, is that a possibility that was?
The only big issue with this, most of the parking is on the south and it's going to be kind of very hard to walk to that side. That's really what the big reason is. Plus, if we're going to do this one as a vestibule to drop off people, we're still going to need some kind of driveway from inside the church to connect it to the parking. I mean, because when the car comes in, they still have to kind of walk unless, because now it's a dead end area, it's going to be very tough for maneuvering in that area. That's really what the reason is.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Clark and then Mr. Neal.
Hello, Monsignor. Thank you for coming tonight. I live in the neighborhood just south of your church and I would just want to compliment the parish on the beautiful property you have there. I asked, related to Mr. Bartnik's question earlier about the grassy area and it's, I think you, you saw the grassy area. I know a lot of the neighborhood walks their dogs in that area and walk through your property and, and so it, it really is a gem of our, our neighborhood and we appreciate you for keeping the property up to the, to the level that you, you have all these many years. I would just say that I used to work for the state of Michigan. I was an aide to the Senate Transportation Committee Chairman and we used to deal with MDOT quite a bit in a professional capacity. And then we used to have a saying in our office about roads that were at failure or near failure. I'm not sure what the Troy Police Department would consider the traffic situation on Big Beaver around a holiday near your church, but it's beyond, I mean, we're talking, you know, catastrophe, failure as far as that situation. So I appreciate you trying to come forward with a plan for the neighbors. I actually live about a half mile south of the church, so I'm not really affected by that. And anytime I don't think around a Christmas holiday or an Easter holiday and I might just find myself in the wrong.
Right there.
It's, you know, you, you do a quick, you know, turnaround to get, get away as quickly as possible. And I'm, I'm sure that the neighbors in the condos are greatly affected by the, who want to choose to go east on Big Beaver. I'm sure most of them flee out the John R. exit, an entrance during that weekend services. My, I have, I want to have one comment and then one question. I, I think I have noticed in the last year and a half roughly, it seemed like the parish has done, taken some precautionary steps to try and alleviate traffic. If I've not, if I'm not incorrect, I think I've seen some shuttle buses perhaps for some off-site parking that you've worked out. Which, you know, to the extent that I'm aware of it, glancing at the horrible traffic situation, it seems to have helped a little bit, but maybe your parish has grown since that, sometimes. I'm not really sure. So I think that was a very wise precaution and certainly at, I'm sure, a large expense to the church budget, which is, I'm sure, difficult. But the question I have for you is like what other steps beyond the plans that have you, as far as being the leader of the local parish, have you taken? You've mentioned, you know, juggling services, which I'm sure has helped as far as the timing. I know the church I go to has done that in years past, but also I know you seem to have plenty of parking. That is a very large parking area for sure, but are there other things beyond perhaps the shuttling, the shuttling service that you've provided to people that may have, show good intent to the board here of your efforts to try and do something to ease the, the catastrophic situation, which is the traffic during holidays? And I don't, and I'm not trying to say that the weekends services are, are necessarily good as far as the traffic goes, but certainly we know Easter and Christmas and some of the other Christian holidays are very difficult.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely, it is a, a matter that concerns us because it is affecting not only the church but the neighbors as well. And we believe we have a role to play to ease it for everybody. Now, apart from what you said, mentioned having shuttle buses to take people, we reached an agreement with Lowe's and around the corner that people can leave their cars there and our shuttles are driving them to the church and bringing them back to their vehicles. And that happens on special occasions, Easter, Christmas, Good Friday, big celebrations, which are three or four per year. In addition to that, like I mentioned, a new church was built on 20 Mile Road and Dequinder, which is only three or four miles.
Twenty volunteers.
Three, only four miles away, three and a half miles away from where St. Joseph is in the same line. Further east, three miles away, another church was recently bought, Holy Martyrs on 19 and a half and Mount. Three miles further south, a Roman Catholic church has been, an arrangement went with them to have Caldean masses celebrated as St. Sylvester Roman Catholic Church on the corner of 12 Mile and Van Dyke. There is an intention of having maybe another church in the neighborhood to take the pressure. There are Christians in the area and it is pleasing to see that people are practicing their faith. We believe this will eliminate, I don't say fifty, 100% of the problem, it will take good portion of it away. It is simple mathematics. You take one car at a time through one entry. It takes, say, one minute, you take another car, in the same minute, two cars are moved away off the road in one minute instead of one. The other precautions, yes, we are increasing the number of volunteers who are there on the premises, serving the community, taking care of the parking arrangements on-site. And I believe this is given, this, this approach, given a, a chance, it will work. It will take 75% of the problem.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask one more. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just another question, I think perhaps for the other board members who don't live in the neighborhood and maybe perhaps have not been to your, your church. I have actually been there for a service. I am not Roman Catholic, but I was invited to attend one given Sunday and I did notice beyond the very large congregation you have, you seem to have a, a higher percentage of senior citizens. Is that correct, Monsignor?
Very correct and these are people who, let's say, I'm not going to get into politics, they were persecuted because of their beliefs and they left everything behind to get to a place where they can worship freely. And yes, the church is the only relief they have. They do not go to many social places, but that's kind of the comfort they have. The, there's a very large number of elderly people and senior citizens who come to worship here in a language they understand and feel comfortable with. Remember, this proposal has taken a lot of efforts from the church and it is costing especially these hard times for everybody, including churches. It is not easy to come up that much money to spend and what is the benefit for the church? It is not generating extra fund. It is taking, solving a problem that's affecting the citizens of the city, people who are communicators of, on that road. So we are trying to contribute to solve a problem rather than create one.
If I could just have one final question. The one thing, Monsignor, that you have not addressed and I've just, living in the neighborhood, you know, seeing, you know, the difficult traffic situation, once again, not just on holiday weekends for service, but also just every given Sunday, it seems that, if I'm not incorrect, the Troy Police are oftentimes there. Does the parish contract like for extra, you know, for a fee with the Troy Police Department to provide, you know, traffic safety? I'm sure you must have on the holidays because I, I see, you know, probably a quarter of our police forces out there in a necessary fashion because there's, there's just such a, a large influx of vehicles.
Definitely, the church has been contributing towards the cost of that, of those details and that operation.
Okay.
And we're trying even to meet those costs. It is additional, it is extra for us, but it is something that we want to do and we need to do to make it easier for both people who go to the church and people who are using Big Beaver. So as you can see, we're trying every single method, every single, exploring every possible way of trying to minimizing the impact of many people attracted to worship, to practice their faith, try to do it with less headache for everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Monsignor, just one question, more of a site plan informational question. And I, and I appreciate what information you've conveyed about the need for an additional route of entry. If an additional route of entry can be added to the northern portion of the site, between the rectory office, small hall and the big hall, there appears to be an area of land that you can see presented on the monitors. Is there anything that would prevent you from having your second southern route of entry to the rear parking lot between those two buildings? The reason I ask this is that whereas you proposing to add a, a drive along the western boundary with your revised drawings and which you've removed the, the second vestibule, would you be able to accomplish the same goal by having that second route of entry to the main parking lot shifted more eastward between 2444 and 2482? Has that something been considered?
Okay, two answers to that actually. Number one, there is an easement along that line there between the two buildings, 2444, 2482. It's an easement that goes, goes past Big Beaver on the other side and it continues. On the south side, it continues until it goes to the public reserve and the pond there at the end of it. That's one. Number two, we are trying to maintain the number of parking spaces because we do not want to lose any parking space. If you do that, imagine wherever you put the second entry, it will affect and it will take so many parking spaces that are badly needed. Number three, the supposed or proposed new entrance actually is coming to catch the eastbound, eastbound traffic. We are on Big Beaver, Big Beaver by that red line. Cars approaching, say, from John R. site, they're coming this way and they will go down into this, not there, the one previous, the proposed one, right there. Before they get into the property, they go down there to the parking spaces available at the south part of the property. While people coming from the other end, Dequinder Ryan on Big Beaver, that's the turning point for them and that is basically their entry point. So you are observing two waves of traffic, one coming from the west, one coming from the east and they're getting off the road in much faster time than waiting for both of them to merge into one entry as it is now. One has to give way to the other. If a car comes here, it means the backing up of the cars will increase or will double on Big Beaver. So that is the whole, the purpose of what we're trying to achieve. Allow the cars coming to the property on Big Beaver, say, from Dequinder side, from west, east to west, to come into the current existing entry point, creating that additional entry will take faster any vehicles that are on Big Beaver aiming into entering into the property.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Monsignor. I appreciate the information. Just one, no, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Just want to answer also one question. If, if they all come from the center part and like, for example, if one issue come up in the other meeting that we make that road next to the church only one way and to use that green area as to go back out. But the problem is if they come back to that entrance to the center, it's going to be a conflict because people all coming in and some people are going to go out, there's not enough place to turn around unless they get, they're going to use the east side. We tried to work on it after our meeting and it seems like we're going to be stuck in the middle area. There's a lot of conflict of cars, maybe it's going to end up being there.
I appreciate the information.
Thank you.
In regards to the 204-inch diameter storm sewer, I know it does go across the site and extends to the north and south. Clearly, it's partially occupied by parking in addition to the space in between the buildings. I'm not sure if that is preventative for, for the concept that I threw out as far as see if I considered. Obviously, you had. But the only final question I have, just so that I'm aware, is the, the, the structure that's in between the two buildings, it's like a rectangular slab, what is that? Is that a patio or? Is that a patio, or?
That's a volleyball court.
Volleyball court, okay.
Yeah, it's just sand.
Okay, oh, I appreciate it, okay. All right, thank you, I appreciate your information.
Any more questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Fisher.
The new entrance way, you had mentioned that the, you have a lot of elderly patrons, are they going to be dropped off at that new entrance way?
No.
Okay, so that's going to be a through, it's going to be a through?
It is just a driveway, there is no drop-off point there, the drop-off point is here at the main entrance of the church on that side.
So there shouldn't be any issues of any backup?
No.
Okay, that's my concern.
What we are doing there as an improvement, actually, the rest there, the entrance, it has one double door, and we are proposing to expand it so that people go through that corridor and come out in much more ease, and that is also an improvement to quicker or faster move people who are dropping off, instead of having to go only through one door. We are introducing a second door so that more people can be dropped quicker and go into the building faster.
That's in the vestibule area on the front, not in the back.
At the front, at the front of the church.
Thank you.
Where there is an existing entry now.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes. I assume that somebody did study the effect of taking the east exit and enlarging it and turning the current entrance into just an entrance, that is, no exit from there, both lanes coming in, and the east exit being a double exit. I assume they've checked that first.
Imagine, okay, imagine you have three-hundred-twenty-one parking spaces.
Right.
At special occasions, and the high mass on Sundays, it is packed. There are so many elderly, senior citizens need to be picked up when they leave the service, just like they are dropped off. They have no easy mobility, so they cannot walk any distance. Most of the time, what is happening is people, cars are leaving, they come through between the two buildings in the front of the church and pick up the elderly people from there and continue to exit. Plus, like I said, three-hundred-twenty-one cars on average, three-hundred-twenty, if they are there, there are two exits, they can exit the building, the premises faster, it is taking the cars off the road, that's our concern.
Yeah.
And this is what we're trying to solve.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the petitioner? See, none. Monsignor, if you could take a seat?
Thank you very much, thank you all.
Thank you. Before I open up the public hearing, I wanted to ask Mr. Evans, I see a representative from the Troy Police Department here, are you aware if he has any particular information on this issue that he wanted to share, or if he was here as a resource, or just because he had nothing else to do with this evening?
I can say that the city did not ask the representative, but perhaps the applicant may have asked.
Okay. Would you like to come up and address the board, and then we'll open up the public hearing after your?
Chairman.
Mr. Clark.
While we're waiting for the gentleman to come forward, could Mr. Evans address Mr. Bartnik's question as related to the?
Oh, yes.
Green area just south of the property, as far as the ownership, which I'm sure it's owned by the city, but I'm not sure.
You're exactly right. In the area Mr. Bartnik is talking about, this blue area is the church, Mr. Bartnik, I believe you're talking about this vacant area here?
Yes.
Yes, that is owned by the City of Troy, that's a, I believe it's a retention basin.
Yes, it's in line with the spill basin, or whatever you referred to, going down the south from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lieutenant?
Yes, Lieutenant Livingston, Dave Livingston, from the Troy Police Department. The reason I'm here on behalf of St. Joseph's Caldean Church, and also for the city, is basically, everybody knows that every Christmas, every Easter, and we've been doing this for eight years or longer, we've been assisting people getting in and out of that particular parcel of land. We've worked with the parish on staggering masses, mass times, we've worked with them on other things, like the city property on the south side, we've got an agreement with the, between the city and the church, that they can use that for additional parking, although that sometimes has caused issues, if there's poor weather, and it's, the area's soft, it's caused ruts and things like that. I will say that over the years, every year it seems to get better with regard to working this particular detail, and people going in and out, but it's usually Christmas, Easter, and special events where we have the most problems. And oftentimes, traffic is backed up for eastbound Big Beaver, sometimes all the way up to John R., back up to John R., so, and we're just there to assist in getting, getting that traffic out. What Father, Monsignor indicated, it is difficult when you've only got one entrance, and you've got people stopping to drop the elderly off in the area north, where that's the designated handicap parking area, and then having other cars track him in from behind and find parking spots. And the reason we stagger the times of the mass is because very family-oriented community, and oftentimes they'll stand around, they'll stay around and converse with fellowship with the people from the previous masses, and that oftentimes keeps them from exiting in a timely fashion, so. My only role here was just to let the board know that the parish is doing all they can to try to alleviate the backup on Big Beaver, and the Troy Police Department is there to assist them during Christmas, Easter, and the special events, to make sure that everything's done in an orderly fashion. St. Joseph does pay for the services of the Troy Police Department, there's usually a contingent of at least five of us during the Christmas and Easter details, not a quarter of the department, but it may seem that way. But we are there to help, our main concern is public safety. Okay, so if I entertain any questions anybody may have?
Questions for Lieutenant Livingston?
Chairman.
Mr. Neal.
Officer Lieutenant, the only question I would have is, do you, does a traffic backup, in your mind, even with the Troy police being there to help handle the traffic flow, constitute a true public safety issue?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Courtney.
Un-business related, who's the stripe for?
Unfortunately, there was a Kamazoo Public Safety Officer who was killed in the line of duty last night, so just a mourning band that we earn a badge.
Who's, oh, Mr. Stratt.
Your observation, the traffic congestion is primarily from the east or from the west?
Primarily coming from the east. As an example, just this past Palm Sunday, we closed down, we usually close down all the turnarounds from St. Joseph's Church all the way to John R., so they got to go past John R. to come around to enter into the church, because what happens is, when that traffic backs up toward John R., you've got people in those other turnarounds coming in and try to squeeze in, and impedes traffic, other traffic going eastbound. That has gotten better since we've done that, however, it still causes problems, because invariably, we've been fortunate that hadn't caused any crashes, but because we're there to keep the people moving, and we've issued several violations. When we see a violation of somebody impeding traffic, we'll issue a violation, so that word gets out and people see us that, yeah, we're there not to, just to make sure that the roadway is clear for them. So it does back up, and most of the traffic comes from the east, and when they exit, it goes back toward the east.
Have you considered, or has a traffic light been indicated at all?
There was discussion on a traffic light, the expense is, in my own opinion, is not worth what it would do. A traffic light would actually probably back up traffic more going westbound.
Right.
Because they've got to wait for, for that light to function.
Right. I was just, that's county-owned, so the county has jurisdiction on that.
County would have to do that.
We don't have control, too much control over that, yeah.
But that has been considered in the past.
That was another issue I was concerned about. Okay, great, thank you.
With this current proposal, the fact that they took out that drop-off point would really, because my concern with that initially was, they'll be dropping people off on that west side, which still inhibit traffic coming in from eastbound Big Beaver, when they're dropping it, but since they took that away, as long as traffic goes freely along that west side and to that south parking lot, it will certainly help alleviate some of the congestion that we currently have on Big Beaver.
Sure, understand.
Mr. Clark, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, clearly you're a very experienced law enforcement official, you, I'm just trying to help the, my fellow board members here understand the magnitude of what we're talking about here, and, you know, once again, I've lived in and around large Catholic parishes my whole life, but this really is kind of the Super Bowl of all traffic snarls, in my opinion, and you folks in the police department here do an exceptional job, I would say. I was surprised when you said that you use about five officers, because it seems like you have things well-run and well under thumb as far as the actual situation, but a traffic safety issue or concern, I think, for me and anybody who lives in that area, that's our first priority, but when you said, I'm trying to help others envision, is at one point you said that the traffic does sometime back up to John R., but as far as the, like, on a given weekend, how far off the church property would you say in each direction are you regularly dealing with traffic snarls? And I know, in reference to that, I just know that I've noticed so many different people coming along, and there they are, you know, coming eastbound, you know, between, you know, Rochester and John R., there's not one car on the road, and then all of a sudden, they cross John R., and there's almost a lot of accidents, that's the route I normally come, but as you mentioned, coming from Dequinder Road, I see it in a very difficult situation as well.
Yes. Fortunately, we haven't had a lot of crashes. What we do is, once that traffic is backed up toward John R., usually that's an indication that that parking lot is full, and we'll just tell people to move along, and we usually have an officer in the Morel subdivision just east of that, because they tend to, the parishioners tend to go in there and park all over the place, but that, we've got a lock on that as well. Another example, this past Palm Sunday, we were in there, no, really no parking issues, everybody parked legally, although I had to have a couple people move their cars, but we just move them along. We don't allow them to create the problems that could lead to a traffic crash, if at all possible. But again, it depends on the time of year. On Sundays, we really haven't had too many calls on Sundays for any traffic problems at St. Joseph Church, with the addition of the other churches in the area, that has alleviated some of that congestion. When they have special functions, recently they had a, an ordination and feast days and things like that. If we're advised of that ahead of time, we usually have a detail or somebody assigned to that, just to make sure that the traffic flow is much better, but generally, it's usually Christmas, Easter, and a couple of other feast days. Sundays really haven't been a problem.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Stratt. Yeah, your observation, the exiting, is it a lot of traffic exiting, are they causing a lot of traffic jams?
No. When we're there during the special event, we've usually got two lines of traffic going out toward the, from the entrance going east, and one line going the, from that far east lot, and we coordinate.
The easterly exit has one line going out, and the other has two?
During the Christmas and Easter functions. Now, on Sundays, it's usually just the one going either side. We open it up for two, because we can stop traffic going eastbound to allow those extra cars to come out, but being prudent, just one lane going out each side on Sundays, because what's going to happen, what happens is, people will need to take the first two lanes of that three-lane roadway going eastbound, as opposed to now, they're just going out and just going that one, one single lane.
Yeah, yeah, so what do you do? Do you block off the turnarounds beyond John R.?
No.
You don't have to?
No, we just block off the ones from the entrance right in front of St. Joseph's Church, all the way to John R.
That's what I meant.
Yes.
Okay.
But nothing beyond that.
Yeah, they can't actually make a left and go east or west?
Because what happens, we found it in the past, what happens with that, especially on days where they've got a large crowd, they tend to make that, that turn, and now they're blocking two lanes of eastbound Big Beaver, because it's backed up and no one's letting them in.
Right.
So we're there to push them along and get them out of there, so they don't cause a traffic.
So the real biggest problem is the people coming in, not so much the exiting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And the addition of an additional entrance way would certainly help alleviate, allow that problem.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Any more questions for Lieutenant Livingston?
I have one question for you. Mr. Bartnik raised earlier a question about having one more drive coming in on the west side of the property, but not having that drive go along the west side of the church. Would adding an additional driveway without extending the driveway along the west side of the church help some of the traffic situation?
No, you're probably talking maybe an additional thirty cars being able to get in there, rather than having a lot of cars going downside.
Long line kind of allows more stacking.
Exactly, and then you've got the problem with people coming in there, and you've got people dropping off, or parking in the handicap spaces, or dropping off the elderly there. You're talking maybe thirty to fifty cars tops, I wouldn't even go fifty cars, but that's all it would eliminate, and you'd have another bottleneck for people wanting to go in and down to the parking. The problem is getting down to that southern parking lot, because there's so many people dropping other people off.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And with that, we'll open up the public hearing, and this lady's been patiently waiting to speak to us, so come on up, introduce yourself, and be sure you sign in.
Oh, thank you so kindly for reminding me.
And you might want to move that mic down a little bit, so that we can hear you.
Thank you so much. My deceased husband and I moved into our condominium with a lot of joy and happiness in nineteen-seventy-eight, and it's been a pleasure and a joy over the years, as I have, as he and I watched he, people coming and going, a blessing to us as the, watching the people in the church come and go, and with their happiness, and it was also an opportunity to, for us to develop acceptance and patience because of the excitement. But again, it's been great living there, and I appreciated the officer here tonight as a former law enforcement. I can say that they do a marvelous job for our entire city, and we certainly want to thank them for all that they do for us, and I have no problem with the, living beside the church. Twenty-nine twenty-four and twenty-nine twenty-six are the two condos that we own and have lived there since seventy-eight, and I just want to say that I know that this is all going to work out for his glory, and it's, again, always thrilling for me to see the people coming and going, and those bouncy little children coming in, and the happiness and joy and love that I see surrounding the church, so.
So ma'am, I would assume then you're supporting the church's request?
Absolutely, I feel like they're a combination, and they're doing a marvelous job, and they can't help it. If the parishioners get out front, get excited, and, you know, they get angry at each other, hey, that's life, you know, and so, hey, that's all right, you know, no big deal.
Okay.
Forgive me, blessed are.
Any questions for the young lady who spoke to us? Okay, we'll take someone else who'd like to speak to the board now. Come on up. Be sure to.
Go ahead first?
Go ahead.
Shannon Duke, I do have an issue with it. Uh, if you look up in the map behind you, the, uh, condo twenty-nine, thirty is mine. The front of my, it is a freestanding condo. It looks like a colonial. Uh, the front of my house faces west, so the rear of my house is facing that church wall. It's not a large wall. I could stand up it and look right over it, just like looking over this, looking over this podium. Consequently, the bedrooms of my house are at the back of that house. In the summertime, you sleep with the windows open. And I have gotten used to the fact that there is a large unit there that is the heating, air conditioning unit that makes a hum all the time, but you can kind of get used to it. What I am concerned about is that I have that buffer of that green area. With that driveway coming in, it's going to be right up against a wall like this. You'll note that behind my condo, I don't have another condo that's a buffer. I have a little space of green area and that wall. I can't hardly believe that people will not be coming in and saying, oh, this is convenient right here. I have this driveway now. I'll drop somebody off. Imagine if any of you have a Sunday morning where you have the luxury of sleeping in, and let me tell you, I started a new job. I am grateful to be working again. I work long hours. I work seven till eight, nine, sometimes seven at night. I left work to come here. I work Saturdays. Sunday is my day. With this much room with that wall, and cars coming in constantly on Sundays, I can kiss that goodbye. I feel like our property values will go down. And it's not that I don't sympathize with the church. I grew up in Christian churches. Star of the Sea in Grosse Pointe, uh, Joan of Arc in Harper Woods, St. Edmund's in Roseville, and St. Blaise in Sterling Heights. And might I mention, many churches, there's a reason they're built on corners. The Egress and the Ingress to two roads. We are, I, I understand they are stuck here with one road. St. Blaise, I live in Sterling Heights, same situation. They don't have a corner. They have one road, 15-mile road. They don't even have as many road, driveways as this community has. They have one road, or, I'm sorry, one driveway that comes in to the church. So you have one driveway in and one driveway out. St. Blaise has grown into approximately, if I'm, if it isn't still, it has been in the last few years, the largest Roman Catholic community on the east side of Detroit. They manage. I have, I do notice that it is a large community, and they are an active community. Uh, we do have the entrance onto Roundtree closed off during the High Holy Days, Christmas and Easter being, you know, the usual ones. There are other days that are as busy. Um, but we are all accustomed to using John R. I have an organization I belong to, and we meet for breakfast at Anton's, which is at right at Dequinder and 16 Mile Road every Sunday. I'm leaving my complex between 9:30, 10 o'clock, 10:30 to meet for breakfast. And you think, oh, I must have such a headache with all the traffic going to the church. I don't. There really isn't that much. I go to breakfast. I look for a little opening. I get out. If you're not in the first lane next to the church, and there are so many lanes, there's multiple lanes on, on 16 Mile Road, you get out to one of the fast lanes on the far side, and I whip right over to breakfast. I have no issues with the traffic. I understand they have issues coming in and out. I can't believe, I've seen other pictures that you had put up of what the side of the church and the driveway's gonna look like now, but they kind of flash by real quick.
Sure, I can.
I seem to see a door there. It's the drawings. There we go.
Yeah.
This, there's going to be a door there, but somebody is saying, well, nobody's going to be dropping off anybody there. Come on. There's a driveway. There's a doorway. On Sunday mornings, I will be putting up with doors, cars stopping and starting, and whomp, whomp, whomp of the doors constantly. I've enjoyed having the church there. I'm kind of fortunate in that the back of my house faces the back of the church and not the parking lot. I know other people that live near, on that road, but they're right by the parking lot. And I said, how do you stand that noise every weekend with the parking lot and all the doors slamming? And he said, all our, all our, um, condos face the parking lot. Our bedrooms are all at the back of the properties away. I'm in the opposite situation. My bedroom is facing that parking lot. It will be just a few feet from that driveway. And I don't see why it needs to be there with so very little room between our residences, when I know that there are other communities that have the same issue and don't have to come that close to the residences of the neighborhood. So that's my comments. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
You lost me partway through. You go to Anton's every Sunday?
Every Sunday.
Then when is all this sleeping in?
Okay.
I just have trouble.
The, the, see, the thing is, there's other traffics. There's, there's times when I, I have to admit, with this new job, I can't now, because I'm exhausted. I'd like to join my friends. And there are some times when they say, whatever happened to you? And I said, I, I didn't even know Sun, it was Sunday until it was after breakfast. So there's times I can't, but.
And you've mentioned that you don't see any problem with traffic. I would suggest this Sunday, you might drive down there.
Um, I, I know that there are the issues, obviously, on the High Holy Days, but you know what? This is a Christian church, and our High Holy Days involve a lot of traffic, obviously, Christmas and Easter being the most. I've grown up in Christian churches. There is no Christian church anywhere that doesn't have these traffic problems on High Holy Days, that have to have special allowances for people getting in and out. It's not just our neighborhood. It's Roseville. It's Sterling Heights. It's Grosse Pointe. It's, everyone has these issues on these days. And they manage without moving into the space so close to the residences, close to them. Anyone else?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Bartnik?
Mr. Chairman, that I've, I've passed many other churches on Sunday in Troy, and this is the only one that I've seen that has this type of problem. The others may have traffic, but they also have a few more entrances. They don't need the police.
Okay, Mr. Bartnik?
I, I just had a question. If you could describe again the, the height of the wall relative to...
I can look over it just like this.
So even though it's?
I'm only five-three.
Okay. So I, I guess my question is, is the, is the condominium complex there slightly lower than, uh, the church? Or, I mean, is, is there a difference in the elevation, such that the six-foot wall is?
The church is a relatively tall building. I have, the church is a relatively tall building. I don't know how tall. I have a two-story condo.
Okay, but the, the wall itself, you're five feet tall, and the wall itself is lower?
Look right over.
Okay, and is that?
This is not a large retaining. It's obviously a retaining wall, but it's not large enough that it's going to stop any noise. It never has.
And is that, is that, that situation exist? Um, if, I don't know if the map, the, the drawing with the different houses, if we could put that back up there, please? The addresses. Yes, that one. So does that, does that situation exist year-long around 29, 26, 29, 28, 29, 30? Is that the height experienced along that whole wall from as far as 29?
I don't think it changes height there, does it, anywhere? No.
Okay.
But as you noticed, most of them, most of, most of these condos in that same line face the church. The bedrooms are at the back. Maybe it doesn't bother them so much on Sunday mornings, or maybe they're reading their paper and they just don't care. But it's, it would be an issue to me. And, and in addition to which, you have that driveway so close to a residential area that, you know, right now, we at least have that, that variance, that little bit of green, with that driveway right on top of our, right on top of our residences, which we, we consider a community. Our condo complex is a little different than a lot of condo complexes. A lot of condo complexes look like converted apartment buildings. Our condo complex looks like a community. We have trees. We have homes. We have separations. And having a driveway from the church just come right up on top of our community, I feel it would bring our, our property values down. It would be disturbing. I feel for the church, but it's not the only church that has these issues. So that's, thank you for letting me have my say. Anything else?
Mr. Clark?
Just one, I got just one question. I'm looking at the map. I've been in your condo association repeatedly over the years, but, um, according to the map, and it is the case that, same as I recall, that your condo association has numerous driveways right up against the property line as well. So you have asphalt right up onto their property line, uh, not exclusively all the way down.
There's a driveway along that wall, yes.
Well, there's between 2990, 2988, and then further south, uh, 29, is it 26, 2924? There's lots of, I mean, you have a lot of asphalt. I mean, I know you don't own, you own your portion of the condo association, but the point is, uh, that condo association, what you're saying, that you don't like?
Look, there is a road that runs along the retaining wall?
Well, I understand that. Numerous places along, there's, there's, there's a driveway right up against the retaining wall on the condo side. And so my, my point here is, uh, you know, I guess you can't have it both ways, in that the, the asphalt is there. I mean, unless I'm not understanding this, this map properly, there is a driveway in many places. There's a small green place over by 29, is it 264? And then right to your right, which is 29, 28. But generally speaking, there is an infill of driveway along their property line, immediately abutting their tra, their property line. Is that correct?
I'm, you mean driveways going into some of the condos? Many of these condos don't have garages. The, the Colonials do have garages. The others don't have garages.
I don't know about garages. I'm just saying that there's lots of driveway immediately up, abutting the church's property line.
Along that retaining wall, there is a road. Otherwise, people wouldn't be able to get into their condos that face it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Stratt?
Now, to answer that, though, there aren't, uh, 326 cars going along that driveway that you're referring to. In comparison, there is no comparison between the two.
Yeah, you have the occasional person coming in and out of their condo, of which there might be eight, 10, as opposed to maybe 150 cars trying to get in that driveway. And like I said, if there is an entrance on that west side, I can't believe people are not going to be stopping, even if they don't intend for them to, because, as I know, they try to be good neighbors, and they request their parishioners not to park in our condo complex or into the residences on the other side of the church, uh, either. And their, some of their parishioners don't much care for that, that request. And even though the road to, the Roundtree Road to 16 Mile Road is blocked off, they will come all the way around John R. to come and park on our roads, and then just go around the retaining wall to get in. So I know that there's requests that can be made. They could hope that they would not do that, but then they supposedly don't park in our condo complex on their, during their mass and service times either. So there are always people that are going to be doing that. So that's my, my issues, my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
This gentleman who was waiting earlier.
My name's Ed Pichet. I'm the Secretary of the Morel East Homeowners Association, and I initiated the letter to Monsignor Kejboo April 12th. He received it the next day. He's addressed many of the issues, but I do have a couple of open items that he hasn't talked about. Um, if the second driveway to the west of the property is approved, how are we gonna know if it's a success? Is, is there any kind of a go-no-go test that the church is going to apply, or the police department will apply to say, this has fixed the problem? If it doesn't fix the problem, what's the backup plan? What are the next steps? And then finally, if the west driveway is approved, and maybe this is for Lieutenant Livingston, will traffic want to use both the curb lane and the center lane? Curb lane entering on the west entrance, center lane entering in the center driveway. And I don't know if there's any police action that would prevent that from happening. So those are my three questions that were not addressed.
Any questions? What we'll do is, when we finish with the, uh, public hearing, we'll call up Lieutenant Livingston. He can answer those questions for you. Thank you. Uh, anyone else who'd like to address the board? Yes, sir?
My name's Charles Pelzer. I live at 2878, which I am the very south end of the parking lot. You can't see me. So I do live south of the parking lot. It is an all-open field. And that is a four-foot wall. It does run all the way along there. And I appreciate your comment about the 300-and-some cars. And yes, it is a driveway. I, I assume when, when it was built, that they didn't get a variance. At that time, I would assume it was legal for them to, uh, put that there. If I could, I took a couple pictures out of my, uh, bedroom window. That's looking directly at 16 Mile, looking north. And I appreciate the church. I would assume you put that curb in for my concern of the headlights coming in. Uh, I appreciate that, but I don't think that's gonna solve the problem. The, uh, the driveway, uh, there's a reason for, uh, setbacks. I would assume the 50-foot setback is, there is a reason for that. I think a 43-foot variance is excessive. I would agree with the woman before me that putting an entrance there is not gonna stop people, or people are gonna drop off there. That's just human nature. Uh, right now, they're dropping off at the other entrance, which is causing the backup, because cars can't enter when the cars are stopped dropping people off. I was at the January planning meeting, and somebody brought up some good points of forcing people to continue to the back of the church and using that as a drop-off where the other handicap spots are, which would keep the flow of traffic. If people weren't dropping off, they would, could go straight into the parking lot, as opposed to turning to the right to drop people off. Uh, if you put more handicap back there, maybe that would alleviate part of the problem. But if you're looking for traffic flow, putting a driveway there isn't gonna cut down on the, uh, you know, you're gonna have two lanes. Yeah, you're gonna have a few more cars coming in. Both those lanes are gonna stop to drop people off. People are gonna drop off on the- People are going to drop off on the west entrance, they're going to drop off at the east entrance. Ideally, you put in a south entrance and make that the drop-off area. Don't think there was anything else. You are going to lose parking spaces by doing that. I don't know if they're, in the new plan, if they're leaving that shed there at the south of the property, just the north of the parking lot? And if they're going to do anything with all the mechanical there, I have no idea. It didn't look like, it looked like it disappeared on the drawings. What's going to happen to all that mechanical? Still there? Is the entrance going to be south of that mechanical?
Yes. No, the entrance is north of that.
North of it? Okay.
Where it is now?
Again, you know, I, you know, yes, Sunday mornings, I personally hear a lot of cars' doors shutting and whatnot, and it is a nuisance, but I'm right on the parking lot. I can't solve that. I'm concerned about all the other houses and how that's going to affect my property value also. Because, you know, I mean, there is, that driveway there is a one-car driveway. So the distance between there, I would say, is maybe 12 feet. Another eight to 10 feet to the condo, you're looking at 22 feet. And then your four-foot wall, and right on the other side of that, you're going to have a driveway. A little too close to residential, I believe. Thank you.
Questions? Yes, Mr. Bartnik?
Your house doesn't appear on this particular drawing that's on the screen as south?
I would be right south of that parking lot, 2878, right there.
Okay, so you look north into the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
My bedroom window faces right into there. And they have a dumpster to the right there that, every morning, I hear them dumping that dumpster. But, you know, you learn to live with it. Comes at about 7:15. I don't know if there's any ordinance on that, but that seems awfully early for me, for them to be dumping garbage.
We can check on that. I'll give you my card, and we'll talk tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address the board? Yes, sir. Mr. Clark, did you have a question? Glenn, did you have a question? Okay.
Back in January, when this all started and we heard about there was going to be a driveway put in, the wife went around and we canvassed the area to see who was against it or what they wanted to do. But we took, we went from house to house along that west wall there, and we got 26 names of people that are against us. They don't want to see a driveway in there for various reasons. Listening to them, we come up with some concerns that they have. The drop-off area that they pulled off the table now, the problem is, once the driveway goes in, you're probably going to see them back in six months to a year, and they're going to want that drop-off area, the vestibule put on, because they'll have a driveway in there. And that's part of it I don't really care for. But, okay, the 43-foot variance. A variance of 43 feet totally destroys the 50-foot setback and what it was intended to do. The existing mature trees and shrubs will be gone. Five parking spaces will be eliminated. The required berm can't be built. Proper sight and noise screening cannot be put in. There will be three 20-foot light poles next to the lot line. Water management, water management to prevent ponding of water becomes an issue. You're going to go from street level to the sidewalk, down to the first parking lot, you're going to have to regrade the entire side of the building there because the pitch of the land, you're below with that driveway, you're going to have to come back up, it's going to swing out, and it's going to go back down. That's where the water management falls into play. I don't believe there's any storm sewers at that side. You will have runoff from the new driveway. Now, there'll also be exhaust fumes from standing cars on the driveway. The additional driveway really isn't needed because they, on the, I have a pointer, so make some use of it. On this side here, there's three lanes. Currently, they only use two, and they keep one for an exit. These two lanes can fill that lot in less than 10 minutes. Since no cars are entering, no cars at this here exit, no cars enter off of 16 Mile, they stop them right here. When, they keep, they hold them there until this lot is totally emptied and these lots are emptied out. Now, once this lot is emptied out back here, this can be used for entrances at the back lot also. Now, if you use all three lanes, you can fill that lot in seven minutes. You can't bring them in off of 16 Mile fast enough to fill this lot with these three lanes that they currently have. They need to make better use of it. They have drop-off area, yes. I watched it. I watched it on multiple Sundays. During a mass, you might have 10 people drop off people. That's it, 10 cars. There isn't any more than that. Every time I've seen, I've seen some of the masses, nobody drops off anybody. Now, the church entrance and driveway off 16, off of the Big Beaver, there's two lanes. The driveway, yeah. The driveway off 16 is two lanes wide. The cars enter in a single lane off of 16 Mile, and they're dividing into two lanes, and they proceed through here. Timing, I timed the cars, and it takes about three, every three seconds, you'll have a car come into there. That means you've got about 20 cars a minute that they're going to be putting out to that lot. Now, there's 320 spaces, so it'll take about 16 minutes to fill everything up, front and rear lots. Adding additional entrances off Big Beaver will have minimal effect. A car entering from the right hand can only enter from the right-hand lane on Big Beaver. They're already moving at six miles an hour, and they have to negotiate the turn. Even if you add a second entrance, they still have to negotiate a tight turn there. They're moving at six miles an hour. How fast do you think these cars are going to go when they have to make the turn? 10, 15 miles an hour? It ain't going to happen. Six miles an hour is a very comfortable speed. I watched them. Any faster than that, you're starting to get into a safety problem. Dividing the entrances, what happens, you're going to, they all have to enter from the right-hand lane. You're going to have the first car turn in here, the second car has to go 70 feet and make the turn here. Now, these, they'll no longer have two lanes coming in, they're going to only have the single one. You gain nothing because you're going to have to have somebody here directing who goes to what lane, into, you know, which entrances do they want them to go in. You're going to create spaces between the cars because they have to wait to be instructed which entrance they're supposed to go to. Congestion and stack-up of cars on Big Beaver from the church happens only on holidays and special events. It's about 10 times a year or less. The stack-up of cars on Big Beaver are caused for two reasons. First, a mass will run over in time due to a visitor. This is what happened back on March 6th. They had a bishop, I believe it was a bishop that visited, and he talked during the sermon, and it created to go longer than it should have been. The second reason is that there's more people attending the mass than what the church was built for. Both conditions require more time between the masses to let the parking lots empty out. On Sunday, March 6th, the mass service ran longer than normal due to a visitor, which was a bishop. From the church entrance to John R. is 2,300 feet. So from here all the way back to John R. is 2,300 feet. If you have a car that's 16 feet long with four feet between them, that's 20 feet divided, divide your 2,300, it's 115 cars. They went beyond that. Because, you know, on those holidays, your turnarounds are all shut down, like the officer said, they have to go all the way down beyond John R. to make the turn. Now, we had 115 cars waiting for the previous mass to end because it ran over in time. They were out here for 45 minutes, nobody moved. They wouldn't let anybody in because this lot was totally filled. Now, we had 115 cars in line, but the lot holds 320. So where's the other 175 to 200 cars? They're going up and down 16 Mile, back and forth, waiting to figure out what's going to happen here. This was backed up 45 minutes. One mass is supposed to end, it ran over into 15 minutes into the other mass. There was no time between masses. 45 minutes, everyone stood still. Now, this is what happens on occasion, and this is usually when a visitor's there. Now, last, the past Sunday, last Sunday, Palm Sunday, the mass had an overcrowding condition. Those who came early had to wait for the lot to empty from the previous mass. This time, we had a huge backup again, which went past John R. Now, when they did let it in, all 323 spaces got filled. Another 50 to 60 cars were parked in these aisleways, along this edge over here, and along the edge down there. They had them backed into these spaces, and they had one roll through here, one roll through here. This is approximately 60 additional cars on top of the 320 spaces. They had to shut down this entrance finally. Their parking crew stopped people, they waved them on. There were still about 40 to 50 cars waiting. Many of those stopped in front of the church at this point, dropped off visitors who walked over. All these cars that were waiting out, a lot of them just proceeded to the Morel East subdivision, parked in there. And yes, they were parked legally because they can park on those streets, but there was 20 to 30 cars over there. Now, if you take what the city uses for the capacity of a church, which is one car, three people, and you take the number of cars that were there that day, 320 in a lot, 60 that were parked in the aisles, 20 that were in Morel East subdivision, you've got 400 cars. Times three people, you've got 1,200 people. That church has a capacity of 800. Where is everybody standing in there? Now, as I understand it, they've been, that's Palm Sunday, what do they do on Eastern when they have more people than that? Now, you talked about the parking lot that's there, the empty land that's back here for parking. Where are you going to put those people? What are you going to do? If you open that up down there, all you're doing is saying, "Put as many people as you want in that church." You have fire problems, you have safety issues. If a car was burning in a back parking lot here, and they got this all jammed up with cars, that car's going to burn. There's no way to get there. If you have something going on in a clubhouse, how does a fire engine get over to it? Now, Wexford condo entrance is about 700 feet from here to our entrance. We have to block it off on the holidays and in the special events. We don't even hear about them when we get a visitor and that, we're stuck. But on the holidays, we block our entrance off. The police department provides us with cones. We block the entrance off. We have to provide security at our expense so that to keep the people from parking down here along this edge over here. They park at the lower edge of the, which would be down in here, and try to sneak over the wall. They'll come in and park and just try to walk over. So we have to have security because this is all private streets, private parking. Now, Wexford is a quiet residential community that resides alongside our church. The 50-foot setback was put in place to keep the peace between the neighbors. Allowing the destruction of the setback through variances reduces the quality of life for Wexford condo owners. The property values will fall, and the condo owners will move. Wexford condo owners would like to enjoy a peaceful holiday dinner without seeing cars racing up and down the rear, racing to the rear lot. There are other ways to solve the traffic backups on Big Beaver before adding the unwanted driveway. The driveway can't shorten mass times, and it can't stop the overcrowding of the church. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Oh, Mr. Bartnik?
I did have a question.
You've made a lot of, from your testimony or statement today, I take it you've made a lot of notes or inspections or observations?
I have a lot of pictures, too. Like the overcrowding, parking the aisles, I have all these pictures. I took pictures.
The one thing that caught my ear, though, or attention, you mentioned that the speed of the vehicles was six or 10 miles an hour. How was it that you estimated that?
I used a computer. I was cost estimator with Chrysler, and I did time studies where you studied machinery and input and throughput and all that kind of stuff. Working with cars isn't much different. Probably just put together and how fast it would be. To me, it's real simple. I don't know, it's probably complex to other people. When I was talking about that center driveway, you know, like I said, these cars here would move about six miles an hour. Filling this back lot, if a car moving at three miles an hour is what I was using, and how fast it could be filled with one lane, two lanes, and three lanes. You know, I'd put it together on here. So I mean, I'm not just guessing.
It's not like you were estimating a speeding vehicle. You were doing it in more of a line motion analysis.
Yes, three miles an hour is a medium walk. They say you've got a fast walk. I mean, that's just about six miles an hour, you're going to trot almost.
Mr. Chairman, I had another question, if I may. The three lanes that you pointed out between the church building and the rectory, if you could explain again how those lanes are used prior to a mass? And I think you, I was a little confused about where those, where the vehicles come in, and you said something about the, once they get into the drive, into the parking lot, they're directed in a different direction.
You can only enter from the right lane. It's illegal to enter from the center lane out here. You'd have to have police department blocking it off way back somewhere to allow a second lane to be turned in. It's the same with the exiting. There's two lanes here, but both of these lanes have to exit into the right lane exiting. It's the same with the far exit. They have to stay in the right lane. They put cones up, they'll have a police car sitting in there, and they'll have cones up to keep anyone from going into the center lane. So even though it sounds good that, while we've got two lanes, they're feeding it to one lane, and they have to wait here, there's somebody who, you know, they'll have somebody because this is an exit. This one goes out, and he stops traffic, then this group will go because they'll stack them up here. And then once that clears out, he stops that traffic, and then these go. So it's really only one lane exiting, and it's really only one lane entering, no matter how you cut it. And there's no way to get around it. It's illegal to go through the center lane.
All right, thank you. Any more questions? Yes, Mr. Stratt?
Will we borrow your pointer?
Pointer, oh, you did.
You sure can. Yeah, let us borrow it, if I could, really. We'll give it back to you as soon as the meeting's over.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to address the board? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, Chairman, board members. My name is Susan Kattula, I've been a parish council member for about twenty-four years. I live at five three one zero Dixon Drive in Sterling Heights. And, uh, over the last twenty-four years, I, I don't agree with, I think it was Sharon that says that most churches look like Saint Joseph. I was a member at the parish when there was only thirty families, back in nineteen eighty-seven, and we've grown to over thirty thousand parishioners, okay? I've seen the church go from the small church, like Anastasia, to the large church, we have now to hold between eight hundred and a thousand parishioners. One quick thing I just wanted to say, a little kinda difference between an ethnic cultural church and a regular Catholic church. If I was to move into eighteen mile Ryan area, I would probably go to Saint Anastasia, it'd be the closest Christian church. Um, being Caldian, the indigenous people of Iraq, we, wherever we move into, we will find the closest Caldian, um, Caldian Catholic church. We won't go to the nearest church. Saint Renee is across the street from my home, but I do attend Saint Joseph Church. Okay? Our families are very, very family oriented and faith oriented. There's nothing we do outside of church, you know? We have baptisms and communions and weddings, everything is connected to our church. So that's probably one of the reasons why we have thirty thousand parishioners that attend Saint Joseph. Over the years, we've seen the parking lot, um, I, I'm speaking on behalf as a parishioner and a volunteer at the church. I, I, I think, I didn't think I was going to speak today, I didn't think that we needed to, this is something that, over the twenty-four years and the several priests that I've been involved with and volunteering at the church, we've made so much adjustments. I took some notes, and some of the adjustments that we've made was, um, the one thing I really kinda wanted to say was, all these problems that everyone is addressing, you have to understand, it's only a quarter of a day, maybe a half a day on a Sunday. So it isn't like it's seven days a week that these problems are occurring. And that's one misconception, that everyone thinks, oh, you know, all these backups, all these problems, it is just that Sunday morning. We do not hold any evening masses, we do have weddings, but they are at five or six o'clock, we do not hold them any later than that. For church masses and Christmas masses, what we've done besides Sunday adding additional masses, um, we hold ten masses on Christmas, starting Saturday. And we hold ten masses on Easter Sunday, starting also Saturday. We stagger them every two hours. Our masses do only run about an hour and fifteen minutes, but we have that extra time. So we start from four, six, eight, ten, midnight, and then Sunday. So we did, we do do that. Also, we've worked with the Troy Police very, very closely, I know Lieutenant Livingston said he's been working with Troy for eight years, we've been working with Troy Police for twenty-four years. Because I've been there, and I can contest to that. And actually, I thought it was because of the church they widened sixteen mile road when it was only two lanes. And we also, uh, you know, on very snowy days and very heavy days, truly, we have volunteers out, out in the parking lot, they are there. I mean, we never have no volunteers out there. I mean, they are there, you know, standing outside in the cold and the rain, and they are, you know, trying to lead the traffic in and out. I know, uh, Mr. Lambert was saying, um, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, I think it was Charles was saying, um, it takes only sixteen minutes to load, you know, to have people come in. Well, who's not gonna figure out, if you have double entrances, that it would take a little bit less time? And I know he pointed, I'm sorry, I'm gonna point to. I, I know he was saying that, um, one car will come in this way, and then another car will come in this way. I don't think anybody is going to come in when there's a car coming in this way. Cars that are coming east, I, I mean, sorry, cars that are coming west will come into this entrance, and cars that are coming east will come into this entrance. And that's double the cars. I mean, if you have one car every three seconds entering, now you're gonna have two cars every three seconds entrances. I'm sorry, this is my time?
We can only have one person speak at a time.
Yes. I just wanted to point that out, because I had it in my, um, in my notes. And as Officer did say, it's during feast days, Christmas, and special occasions, which probably would not add up to ten occasions a year. Officer did say that, I, I mean, I am very impressed that Monsignor took the effort to speak to law enforcement, where they're, they are the ones that are there. You know, I'm inside the church, helping out, volunteering, maybe, you know, at the gift shop, or whatever I'm helping with, but he is out there. He's out there with the parking lot attendants, I can't speak for them. He came and spoke, and I really do appreciate it, um, everything that they do for us. And if it was because of cost, we eliminated that. A few years ago, we did split the, say that we would pay for the officers to come, because we understand, um, we understood the problem. Okay? And I, I'm sorry, when, um, resident Shannon spoke about the buffer, and yes, um, um, I think Mr. Bartnik or Mr. Clark, yes, there is a driveway right here, okay? And again, this driveway is not gonna be used twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It's going to be used for the holiday masses and Sunday masses, okay? Because that's when our masses are. I mean, we're not going to be entering at two o'clock, three o'clock in the afternoon if, you know, um, if there's no mass, you know, into this way. And this right here, there is, there, it comes right up to the wall. I've driven here before, I have a couple of relatives that live in the area, and this driver here does come up to the wall, there is nothing there. We have planned on planting some bushes, strawberries, I'm not sure what the exact words are. And besides, what surprises me is these right here, these parking spaces right here, are right against the wall. You know, and they've been there twenty-four years. So I don't understand, that was really something, you know, these spaces here and these here are right against. And, let's see. I'm trying to, just, give me a second to go through my, my notes. Okay? And someone spoke on their property, property values actually going down, and I've checked, and the property values of these condos are just as much of the property values of these condos. There is no difference between, these property values are not any lower than these property values. And besides, I think, living next to a church, automatically your property value goes up anyway. So I just wanted to make that comment. And I do understand, someone made the comment about the parishioners, unfortunately, I have no control over it, Monsignor has no control over how people act, and if they have no patience, and, and they're not courteous. But I do go to mass, and I do relentlessly, um, the other father and Monsignor are constantly telling the parishioners not to park into, in those neighborhoods, and to be patient and be courteous, and not to park, park here. I myself, you know, Charles said that they hire a private company to come in here and make sure that no one parks in there. I, personally, if I had someone that didn't listen and kept parking there, I would call the police, give them a ticket, I'm pretty sure that person would never park there again, because they're gonna get a ticket. So I, you know, just wanna make that comment. And the wall, it is only four feet tall, but you have to understand, if the wall's four feet tall from our side, it's also four feet tall on their side. So I guess they had no problem with it being four feet when it's over the parking lot. And also too, I, I feel very sorry for Shannon, they have, she hasn't, she can't sleep in on Sunday mornings. I have five children, and I haven't slept for twenty years. But, I do some, honest to goodness, I do sympathize. Honest to goodness with, I mean, not just the neighbors, you have to understand the circumstances many of our parishioners are in. I know, um, someone spoke on, only ten of them are dropped off, and they suggested, and they also did suggest on the twelfth, um, have an handicap entrance right here. Well, the church is not, the church right here are, are the pews. So if someone's handicapped, they certainly cannot walk all the way around here. This would have been a great suggestion for them to enter right here. But the problem is that it's too far for them to walk, right here, and they're entering with a, just a little bit of walk with a walker or cane, and they're right into, into the pews, you know? So, I mean, this suggestion, we just cannot, I, I mean, I don't think a person that's handicapped, and we do have very, much more than just ten, maybe on the day he saw, they didn't come at that, that time of mass. Okay? And, um, and the dumpsters, I don't think we have an effect on that, I think it's when the garbage people pick up the garbage. I mean, they can pick it up in the afternoon, that would be better for us. The one thing I do have to say is, um, in the four years that Monsignor has been at Saint Joseph, and through the other priests that I have worked with, I do see that he's probably been the most accommodating priest, truly, he has compassion for everyone, parishioners and people surrounding. We were holding catechism program, if, if we were holding our catechism program like we did in the past, I would say we would have that large congestion more than that half a day on Sunday. Monsignor has taken the steps where we have eight hundred children that are in a catechism program, that we do off-site, we do rent a middle school, and we do go there. And that was probably one of the big reasons, was all that, the traffic jams and, and things like that. So he had taken that initiative, and I really do respect that, respect that from him. Other than that, thank you very much for your time.
Any questions? Mr. Bartnik?
Mr. Chairman, I hate to keep asking questions. You're on the city, the parish council?
Yes.
Now? Okay. So, my, my question is, uh, probably multifaceted, but basically, I, I'm like a lot of people, I, I like to see traffic, I think traffic is indicative of economic activity. Uh, it's one of the, we can't have it both ways, we can have decline in economy and not have traffic, they both have to go together. And then, active religious communities are another blessing, using that word literally.
Yes.
And, and religiously. But I, and, and so I, I see all of that, but I have to go all, to really, we talk about religion here this, today, even though we're probably not supposed to, but we all go back to the golden rule. And I can't get out of the fact that when I went over to the property, and I stood on the church's property, that I could almost, if I wanted to invade people's privacy, I could look into their driveways. And I, I mean, into their homes. And I just cannot get past the idea that there's gonna be a driveway, a commercial driveway, essentially, a driveway that's gonna be used by anywhere from ten to twenty to thirty to forty, to fifty to a hundred cars, at least once a week, and as many as ten times a week, depending on whether it's a regular Sunday or Saturday, or whether it's a holy day, or a group of holy days. I just cannot get over the fact that, that is an imposition upon those people right there on that street, I mean, on that driveway. How, how does the church, or maybe, maybe Monsignor should answer that, how do we address that as a community? And how do you get past it in terms of what we have to do for a, a motion here?
I definitely respect that point of view, and can assure you, I believe, so far, nobody has complained that people are trying to invade the privacy of the neighbors by standing by the side of the wall, trying to interfere with what they're doing. The wall...
And I mean that in that sense, I was just using that as an example of how, of how little space there is.
Okay. With, with the people coming in, nobody's walking on that proposed driveway, so they will be seated. And if they are, if their vehicles, none of them is above the height of the wall there. Plus, there is a proposal, and if we can go to one of the plans, it shows all the enhanced landscaping and the shrubs and the trees that are proposed to be planted there, separating the true properties, even in the southern part, uh, the south of the property, where the gentleman in the corner has a property that has not seen, we are proposing to plant additional trees there, so any light, I mean, at the moment, there are so many vehicles that are driving there, as it is. There is a driveway between two rows of cars parked, and that would be heading towards the window of his bedroom. But we are proposing to put additional trees there, and if he wants, we can plant any car of his choice in his backyard, to block any possibility of light coming through the, um, window of his bedroom. I mean, I am prepared to go in any way to minimize the effect of what we're proposing, so that it does not have an adverse impact on the rest and comfort and privacy of our neighbors, because that is very important for me.
Monsignor, I, maybe I missed, because of the example I used, but there is so little space there, and my concern that needs to be addressed is the amount of noise and activity and everything else that goes along with it, with the traffic that would come in there. Behind, you know, how, how, how do we get around the need for a fifty-foot variant, a fifty-foot, um, uh, set-off there? How do we get around that when we have the houses immediately to the west there that are so close to the property, and there is a four-foot, only a four-foot height there? I, I don't know that vegetation is really gonna realistically address that.
My response to that, I mean, even one counts, and one is important, there are only four houses that will be affected directly by that. Because the rest of the properties are adjacent to the parking lot, that's already in existence. Hundreds of cars are in and out, doors are slammed, open and closed. So it is not something that we are introducing. And actually, it is a known situation, you win, Samu, you lose, Samu. We relieve the big beaver from the congestion of the cars, we have to pay a price, the church is paying the cost. The pay, the church is paying the bill for constructing something, it will not add more parishioners coming to the church, trust me. It will cost us financially, and we are prepared to put up that bill to meet the cost, so that we are taking more cars off the road without, uh, grudging on the privacy and the comfort of the neighbors. With regard to the mechanical there, I mean, it can be tested. You will stand by the side of the wall, separating the church and the neighboring properties, and you cannot hear the voice, the noise of the mechanical. Likewise, I believe with this buffer and shrubs that are proposed to be implanted there, it will minimize the effect of the noise from approaching vehicles, driving that short distance to pour into the southern part of the parking lot.
Well, I, I appreciate your, Monsignor, answering it, but it has not persuaded me.
Well, I mean, we can only try it.
Yeah, I understand.
We can only try it. I mean, I cannot tell the future, but I'm hoping, we are taking a risk, we are taking, sacrificing so much money and so much efforts, and hoping to achieve a result that it will benefit everybody.
Any more questions from the board? Okay.
Mr. Corley?
Okay.
Just, I have one, one, just one question.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Clark.
I'm not sure if it's Mrs. Kattula or Monsignor who could address it, but the one gentleman commented regarding, um, uh, creating an entrance, I believe, if I'm not incorrect, I don't want to misstate anybody's comment, but, uh, on the bottom, if we can have the building up, which I think is two four four two, which is your main building, um, you know, it, it doesn't show the character or the features of the building, because you just seen the roof, but, um, on the, the south side, that the gentleman who lives at the condos was proposing, as far as perhaps you reconfiguring your plans, uh, and having people park down there, that, if, just for, for the board's sake, this isn't the, Mr. Evans, this is not the...
Wrong one.
The address is up on the, on the buildings? There it is. The south side of that building, which is two four four two, this is not really essentially one building, you added a sanctuary on, later, and so therefore, I haven't been in the very southern part of your building, but I have, back when they used to have my precinct in the, I'm not sure what you call it, the fellowship hall now, or what, whatever, um, that's separate from the, the church, there's different entrances, and I know that if, to go into the one section of the building, which is roughly around to south of the address posted there, I believe, where the, the archways have, are on the outside, um, that is essentially a separate building from the sanctuary, which is to the north, even though it's all under one roof, there's not a way to act... is to the north, even though it's all under one roof, there's not a way to access from one part of that, the central part of the building to the northern part of the building, which is the actual church, and I'm not sure what is at the southern part of the building down there, but I know that's either storage or, or a closed-off area. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if you could just describe the actual building itself, south to north, there isn't a way to get a person, albeit a handicapped person or anyone else, through a new door all the way to the church. They'd actually have to essentially walk on the outside of the building completely to the very northern part of the building, which is the church sanctuary, is that correct?
True. See, that dome there is right above where the altar is. The pews are in those lines in that area, and it is all facing east. What we have here, this square, is the old San Anastasia Roman Catholic Church, which was purchased from the Roman Catholic Church, I believe, in nineteen eighty-one. And there is another building added to it, it consists of a couple rooms on this side, and there is a hallway from that main entrance into the church. So, there is one building, second building, and the third building is the church before you get there. In order to have access for drop-offs or disabled or senior citizens, you have to knock down several walls and create a hallway from this end to that end to be able to get to the church, which is impractical, costly, and structurally, we cannot achieve that unless we knock down the old building and rebuild it. Furthermore, there was an entrance on this side, an entrance on this side for the old building, another entrance there, another entrance there. What I did after I came to the parish, I have blocked these two entrances, and so to divert people from going all around the building to have different entry points to the same building. And now, we have the main entrance is on this side, between the rectory, which is there, the offices which are there, the small hall which is there, and that is used as educational center for marriage preparation classes, high school kids, college boys and girls activities. But see, we try to divert everything's direction so that we are not affecting the privacy of the residents and the neighbors behind that building. Like what Sue said, when I came, we had a program of two-hundred-something kids for the catechism. And three months later, we had about six-hundred kids, so I knew that would cause so many problems because they were there Monday, Tuesday, every day of the week, there were about two-hundred kids coming for these classes. Instead, and taking consideration in what is happening and the activities in the church, we went into a contract with Warren Consolidated School, where we are paying about fifty thousand dollars to have a use of a public school once a week to accommodate eight-hundred kids who are being instructed in their religion. And that is a sacrifice we had to make, a price we had to pay to eliminate creating congestion in that particular area, because we cannot accommodate eight-hundred kids in that area. So, as you can see, we are trying our best to minimize these problems, and it is coming at a cost, but we are trying, and we need the support, the endorsement of you and the citizens. When we had a meeting at the church, I told the residents, I am counting on your support, and let us give it a try. I believe everybody will benefit from the outcome of this proposed additional driveway if approved. Thank you very much.
Any more questions? Thank you. We see the public hearing is still open, and I see a gentleman back there would like to address us.
Can I use your pointer for a minute?
Sure.
Please.
If you give it back.
Well, my name is Sam Daya. I live west side of the church. It's a problem there, and I understand that was everybody trying to fix the problem. If you look at their proposal, they want to put the driveway. Okay, we all understand this. One, if they're not going to use this entrance as a drop-off, car's going to continue straight. They have to go around, get back against the traffic here to drop off the holders. Otherwise, where are they going to drop the holders? People cannot walk, so they're going to drive in, go back of the parking lot, and they're going to walk, that's not going to happen. You know that, and I know that. Take a look at the picture here. They're going to use the driveway all the way down, park in the back, and the holder? No, they're going to stop right here, and they're going to use this as a drop-off. And here is what happened. You have about eight to nine cars between this entrance to the sixteen-mile road. That's me, we back up sixteen-mile again, so it's not going to solve our problem. But I'm looking at all this picture, you have, could you give me the picture, that drawing shows sixteen-mile road with it, same this one with a sixteen-mile road in it? Right there, please, thank you. Take a look at this. This is the U-turn. They're coming straight here. This is the west, westbound coming down to sixteen-mile road. These people, they're driving straight to the church. If we make this entrance bigger, right here, this entrance, make it wider, now, east, coming east, they can come here and turn, and these people, they can come turn. Instead of one entrance, we make two of them in that area. We solve the problem. You put a driveway here, guess what? People, they're going to come in, and they're going to go to the, to them, to the left, they're going to block this entrance right there if they're going to come here and go left. It's not going to work. You cannot tell people, oh, don't go left, keep going straight. You know what? They're not listening right now. I mean, that's all I can say. Thank you very much.
Any questions from the board?
Anybody want to ask a question?
What's your address?
Two-five-four-one Marcus Drive, Troy. Two-five-four-one Marcus.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let, let's see if anybody else wants to speak first, and then, this gentleman over here.
My name is Samuel Mitchell, and I live at two-nine, twenty-nine-fourteen Round Tree Drive. That puts me right there, right there at the wall. No, come on, yes, that's eighteen. You've got to come down a little bit more, okay. I live right at the wall, right at the wall there on the corner, where the turnaround is. That road back there where the cement, cement wall is now, that road is not a busy road at all. We got less traffic there than any, than any place. If, now, if that driveway is built to come down that way, we're going to have more noise than ever before coming, coming in there, more congested. I can hear the air conditioning running every, when the summer comes, I know it's summer, the air conditioning be running, I can hear it from my house. I'm the maintenance man around there, so I know a lot of stuff that's going on around there. I see it. Last Sunday, we did have one of the maintenance guys, Steve, do all the patrolling to keep the traffic from coming in. I couldn't get out myself to go to church because it was blocked off, so I had to go to John R. You are so right. There are so many times that you would not, you cannot get down, I'm not against the church now, don't get me wrong, I'm not against the church, but I'm against what you're trying to devalue my property and what you're trying to do. But coming down sixteen-mile road, most of the traffic is coming from Stewart Heights area, and they come down to John R to turn around and come back. I cannot get out of my complex because of that, so I had to use John R exit in order to go to where I got to go to. And once upon a time, which made my wife very mad, we couldn't, she left the grocery store, that's where Farmer Jackson was there, to come back home, and she almost got into a consultation with one of the neighbors that lives in our neighborhood, because she was coming, she was wanting to come off of sixteen-mile road onto Round Tree Drive, and a big dispute started there. So, I can see right now, if that is built, coming down that wall there, we're going to have some problem with the noise. If the air conditioner have the noise now, it's going to be some noise there big time with all the cars coming through there. Plus, on top of that, how can you plant trees straight down there to diffuse the noise? There's not enough room, there's a four-foot fence there, how can you put trees and have a driveway there too? It's impossible. It's impossible. If you study and look at it really good, you can't do it. It's impossible. I'm the maintenance man around there, I see everything that's going on. I know what's going, I know how many cars, I can tell you how many cars come down that way this lady live at. I can tell you how many cars a day come down there. I'm out there, I see it. Okay, that's all I have to say. And I hope you, I hope everything come out good for us, because I hate to see my property go down as it already has done.
Any questions? Anyone else that would like to address the board? Sir, you want, you want to wait and make one more comment?
On the holidays and that, the police are there. They block off into the island turnarounds. That's why you can no longer think that they're going to come east, or westbound and turn into the complex. It isn't going to happen. That's why the right-hand turn lane, when, when this is all blocked off, you can't use the islands and all that kind of stuff, the parking person, the parking crew person who stands out there, he'll, he'll direct that right-hand lane, and he'll put them into two lanes coming into the complex, and that's where it creates a very good flow. Now, I had nothing but compliments when I watched them last Sunday. They did an excellent job out there. You cannot do any better than they did. The police officers, the people from their, their crew that was out there directing traffic, they did everything right, they did nothing wrong. And the police did have somebody go over to Morrell and see that they were parked correctly, and they were. So, now, the other point is the wall. The wall height varies from the Wexford side, the wall height varies. It basically starts at, at maybe forty inches, and then it goes up to, I think the requirement was a forty-two-inch wall at that time. A lot of it does, but once you get past the end, end of the church, everything starts going down because the land is, is sloped, it's higher in the back, so the wall's like level and the land is higher. When you get past the church, it starts decreasing. At the back end, that's why I commented, on the, the south side and the last portion of the west wall there, the wall was only three feet high. Now, that's where Chuck was having a problem, because cars coming down there, they're shining their lights over a three-foot wall. Now, the other thing is, any cars, you know, cars coming down that driveway, forty-two-inch, that's, that's nothing anymore. SUVs and that, these people will be able to look right over that wall, and especially when you get further down, it's, you'll see the headlights, everything through there. That's all I have to say.
And sir, before you leave tonight, make sure you get your pointer back from Mr. Stratt, he's looking at it lovingly, so.
[laughing]
Anyone else want to address the board? With that, we will close the public hearing, and what I'd like to do is have Lieutenant Livingston come back, and one of the gentlemen from Morrell subdivision had a couple of questions, I guess primarily related to if this doesn't resolve, I'm sorry, Mr. Evans?
I believe in the packet, we did have one public comment, would you-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes.
Let me mention that we have one letter in support and three letters in opposition, and some of those people may have spoken to us tonight, but thank you for Mr. Evans, appreciate it. Lieutenant, one of the comments was, or the question was, if this is approved by the board and by the planning commission, but it doesn't resolve the problem, what, what are the next steps that you would propose that the city would do to address this situation?
Well, if it's not this particular proposal, I mean, there's got to be something else that, that needs to be done in order to get people in off of Big Beaver. As was stated so eloquently by the councilperson, that the parish has grown, and over the years, and I don't anticipate it, even with the addition of these other churches, has slowed down, slowed down a little bit, but I don't know what the, what the future holds as other people start coming to this area here. They're pretty much landlocked, as far as the building goes, it only holds so many people. But if this proposal isn't, isn't approved, then we'll just have to research some other things to try to get that, that traffic off of Big Beaver. That's my concern as a representative of the police department, is the public safety aspect of it. I can certainly sympathize with the people from Wexford subdivision and even the Morrell sub. We get in there to make sure that people aren't parking in the, in the Wexford condominiums, and same with the Morrell, we do a pretty good job with it. But the bottom line is the influx of people along Big Beaver, and that's, that's the, that's the main clutch of our problem, is trying to keep people off the road. And as far as the gentleman indicating that whether or not people will be turning off out of the center lane, we don't, we don't do that. It's, it's difficult enough just trying to get them in off of that far-right lane into the, in the complex, and that wouldn't change with an addition of a different, with another driveway.
Yes, I did, Mr. Chairman. Lieutenant, with your work with the police department in Troy and other properties that may have similar traffic issues, I guess first the question I would ask is, have you, have you been associated with other high-volume properties in Troy where you have to do a lot of traffic direction, that they had to look for a solution?
No, not-
Not like this?
Not like this.
Just, just goes with a question of general knowledge, or maybe suggestions, is, when, when traffic volume issues need to be resolved and be evaluated by a subject matter expert, in other words, like a traffic engineer, are there parties that the police department or the road commission, I know you're not part of the road commission, that would refer them to, to do a independent study to find a solution if this solution here doesn't work?
We've worked with our traffic engineer on this particular problem, and again, it's, it's not a constant problem.
Right.
If it was a constant problem, we'd be, they'd be all over that, but it's not, it only happens certain times of the year, during Christmas, Easter. We've consulted with them, we've consulted with various departments within the, within the city, and with the church and the, and the community, and the way we do it now is probably the best solution we have at the present time, absence of any other additional entrances. We've got it down to almost a science, so to speak, the way we've been doing it, but again, it's still, it still backs up, no matter how, how well we, we orchestrate it, it still backs up.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Yes, Mr. Stratt.
Lieutenant, I'll use this now, okay?
I was wondering why you could get around using that.
Are you allowing people to drive in directly, is that what the problem is? You, you do allow them to come in from the turnaround directly in?
Not, on Sundays, they're, because we're not out there on Sundays, but on, during Christmas and Easter, the only traffic we allow in there are the shuttle buses.
Okay, so what do you do? You allow them to come back and turn around?
They have to go all the way past John R to turn around.
So, everything-
Those are all, those are all, all the turnarounds are closed out.
So, they, they come in, like, everybody comes in-
Everybody can-
In that direction?
Yes, sir.
I see. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions for the lieutenant? Yes, Mr. Hart-
If you had a, if you had the other entrance, though, you could possibly allow eastbound and westbound traffic at the same time, then?
Yes, it would be, it would be a, again, with anything new, you've got to educate everybody, and it'd be the same with, with the church, they have to educate people on, if you're coming from, from that turnaround, you've got to go so, you know, somewhere in that, that particular lot. If you're coming eastbound, you've got to use this entrance and this entrance only. Nothing is a hundred percent, and I know there'll be problems with that. Again, it's like they- Again, it's education and some time, and a really coordinated effort with the volunteers. The volunteers is really what would make it work. If the volunteers are working at it, it'll work. And they'll keep people going and not dropping people off. However, you're still gonna have your five, ten percent are gonna do it, no matter what they ask them to do.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other follow-up. So, really what we're talking about is this area here. Paul, could you drop that down a little bit until they?
Not on this one. Let me call up another one for you, Tom.
Okay. Drop it down and over to the left, or if I can get more right. It's pretty small.
Now, we can.
Blow it up.
Something like that, Tom?
Okay, yeah, that's good. The main problem is right here. What I'm hearing you say is during Sundays, regular Sundays, you allow that?
Yes. We don't shut anything down. We don't even have a detail on Sundays.
Okay. But the real problem is, is this congestion right here?
Yes.
This is the real problem area?
That, that's the problem. And again, even with the extended time between the masses, I mean, they're a very family-oriented culture, and some people will stick around and mingle with their friends and family members, which will not free up some of the parking spaces that they would need for the next mass with such a high volume of people in that particular parish.
The thing that the planning commission, when we were talking, one of the comments that we were suggesting, and I think you were at the planning commission, were you not?
Yes, I was.
Yes. One of the things we suggested is that if they had a big de-acceleration lane right here, and if in fact this was widened so that actually this was separate in terms of the focal point here, so it allowed the traffic to come through. If this were one-way only, as a means of entering only, and the traffic flow would be directly flowing out from here, directly around and out, do you think that would help the problem?
In theory, that would work fine, except when people are picking people up after mass.
Okay, so what you're saying is what they'd have to do is turn around and come around in order to do that?
Or when they're leaving the north lot, the handicap lot and coming down to.
This one right here?
Yes.
I see. So, there are, people are parked there. It's a handicap situation. Yeah, that would be a problem. But where is that gonna be alleviating this over here? How can that, that doesn't alleviate that problem?
No. It's just, the only thing you could do is if you came in and dropped the people off at that north end, those had to drop off, and then found parking spots in that area there, and everyone else had to go south.
Right.
Without dropping anybody off.
Right.
That would certainly.
Right. But I heard the comment from one of the people at the public hearing that there weren't that many drop-offs, but then I hear that there are, so I'm confused.
Well, I'm not there on Sunday, so I don't know, but on.
Why aren't you there on Sunday?
Really, there hasn't really been an.
No, I'm kidding.
But during Christmas and Easter, there are, there are a lot of drop-offs.
Yeah, I can imagine. So, real congestion is here.
Yes.
So, that's the other. But if there were three drop-off lanes here?
That would just, it would still back people up to, under Big Beaver. Ideally, you'd want one drop-off lane and the other two to go in?
Or something like that, yes.
But then again, you've still got the problem with trying to get everybody from that south lot out. And if everybody goes to that right side, it's still gonna take a while to get everybody out so that people can come in and park.
So, there's a timing situation between the masses?
Yeah, that has improved over the years. But again, if you have a guest speaker, like as was mentioned before, that, or people just wanna stick around and converse.
That's something you can't control.
No, there's nothing that, and even a church can't control that.
You're either gonna have to learn or whatever. What I'm hearing you say is that really, the drop-off here is a real problem. And it may be because of the timing situation.
Yes, basically. Again, weather plays a part in it too. Even without the elderly, if it's raining, people are gonna drop off their families there because they don't want them to walk in the rain.
Okay, my last question is gonna be, what if, in fact, you had this like this so that people could come in? And what if you expanded this so that this had a separate entryway? And there was a red light here that allowed these people to pull in and these people to go through?
It would be better than it is now. However, the, you know, the cost of the light, I think there was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars now, but.
We're talking about life safety now.
Sure.
Now, we have to talk in terms of whether the county would go along with that. But it could be regulated, so it's only working during the peak period of time.
There are other churches in the, see, they have that as well.
That's correct. I know that there are. But this is the real crutch right here. This is the real problem.
Yes, right now, that's, that's where the problem is.
Because you can't have people coming right in and then banking in at the same time.
No.
They're just.
No, it's not wide enough.
Yeah, yeah. That is the congestion area. And it appears to me, I really appreciate what they've done here as far as improving this, but the cost that they're putting in here, if they were to actually rework this entrance and put in the red light right here, for what that cost is gonna be, I think it would be a functional, much better solution than trying to still divert everybody to come through in this direction. Because I don't see this, this, actually, as they said, this is gonna be very, very, to me, I can't, I can't go along with this because I feel that what we're doing is degrading all these homes long here. I mean, the value of those homes are going to be down to nil. They're gonna be less than five feet. I don't know what kind of vegetation they can put across here. But that's not really my question to you. I'm on my soapbox here. But anyway, that's the way I see it. Somehow, this is the real crutch right there.
Any improvement in that area would certainly be an improvement that I'd be in favor. Any way you can get traffic off of Big Beaver and into that lot in an expeditious way would benefit everybody. I can add an word to you.
Yes, Mr. Neal?
Unfortunately, take a chance to play with the item for just a quick moment.
Yeah.
And officer, I really appreciate you spending so long here tonight. But one question I have, and I'm thick, and my wife will be the first to admit that, is I do agree with what has been just mentioned about reworking this. I do have one question. I have not been to this site. But what is this right here? Is this landscaping and a tree? This right here? It's a what? Okay. Is it, is it religiously absolutely significant that it be there? Or could it be in a different spot? I'm just curious. The reason why I'm asking is, we were talking, you know, and we're not trying to design your project for you, but in trying to help you, I think this is a worthy, quick exercise, is if this is changed and you're looking for a little more space here, and they have a drop-off lane, if this space here, even though you lose a couple of handicap spots, becomes an extra drop-off lane where cars can stack up and you can unload people who may have wheelchairs, et cetera, you increase this flow a little bit. And I admit, I'm thick, and I don't quite understand one thing. But to increase the flow out, I know there's an easement here, but I know you also have parking to the north and south, and I know this is a volleyball court. But the interest of making it all work, is this maybe your best route out of the site to get back out here? And I guess that's all I have to add, because I can say is that I just cannot get comfortable with this. If you had more land width, I could get comfortable, but I just can't, I couldn't agree to that. And that's my comments.
Any more questions for Lieutenant Livingston? Seeing done, thank you for your help, Tom. I appreciate it.
Can I just clarify my line there?
Sure, sure. Come on up.
I'll go with that white there. Mine, but I'll keep it.
Okay, I am very glad, actually, you are looking at that entry point and to see, to try to find the solution through there. And you will be doing everybody great favor, solving the problem for Big Beaver users, for the neighbors, for the church, saving us a lot of money, except for this problem. Can we have a larger view of this area, please? Thank you. Now, you can see that is, we have two points of, two lanes entering. And as they come in, it narrows down to be just one single entry lane. And imagine there is someone dropping his dad, or ma'am, or a child there. It means that lane is blocked. So, we have a free this one in the middle, and someone leaving the premises uses that one. So, one is out, one is in, from that point on, until you come to the end of the buildings. So, it means if there is one car parked there to pick up someone or to drop an elderly for any reason, they came this way and they want to park there. Or they are leaving and there is an elderly person wishing to leave, and they parked somewhere in this right lane to pick up a passenger. What happened? There is one coming in. That in the middle is for the takeover, whether there is in or out. So, if you can find us a solution for this problem.
My point is that that is only entrance only, one way. One way, three lanes, one way. One could be for drop-off, and the other two could be for people continuing on. Or as just mentioned, there could be another drop-off area, another recess area into your plaza area, which you've improved, and I really commend you for that. Because what you're trying to do is get the people in the church too, and you're getting, but what happened?
Sorry about that.
You see, the width of that could be four-lane wide.
No, actually, there is no enough width to accommodate.
Is it? Okay, well, at least there's three lanes. That would be only entrance.
Agreed. But the problem is exit, you have just one way, and you expect.
Also improved as a two-lane exit, because when that red light is on, when that red light goes on, you can have two people, just like you come off I-75. You come off, two people can be exiting if you widen that. But when you come off I-75, that Big Beaver.
I believe with your respect, like what Dave said, no, two cars cannot exit at the same time.
Not if it's, there's no red light. But if there's a red light there, you can actually have two people exiting at the same time. There's no traffic on it. It stopped. The eastbound traffic has stopped completely.
Let us do this first, and then we'll see what happens. If it doesn't work.
I'm not here trying to, you know, give you a solution. I'm just telling you that.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to point out that this is the situation here. So, currently, and in the future, it will stays like that. We cannot force, I mean, if that is, that's to be widened, and this becomes only in. Now, what do you do with all the elderly, the handicapped people who want, who cannot walk any distance?
Well, we'll have that other driveway over on the other side where they'll use that as an entrance to come in and out. You said that was not gonna be used for that. Now, you're, you told me it wasn't.
Not there. I am talking about this area, okay? So, people leaving the church, they come out here. And if this becomes only entry.
Yes.
Where do you, where's the pickup point for them?
You know, really, in all due respect, I'm not here to try to solve your problem. You know, the planning commission, we said we thought you should really get a consultant that would be actually a traffic consultant. There are people out there that really do it. I'm an architect. I can tell you what my opinion is, but I'm not a traffic engineer. And there are people that are specialized in this. And that's the thing that I think that really you need. Because I think that, you know, you've got a problem, and I understand. And I understand it's a master, you didn't have it properly master-planned so that now we've got real problems. We add it on, and we add it on, and your congregation has expanded. But believe me, the city is trying to help you. I mean, we're really, I mean, I feel very, very, very much like I wanna do whatever I can to help you. And I can only speak for my colleagues, I'm sure we're all trying to help you. We're gonna try to do whatever we can. We just don't want you to make a mistake. But we don't want it to be at the expense of other people either. You know, you have to understand.
We truly appreciate that, and this is what we're trying to achieve too, to eliminate some of the problems that are affecting the neighbors and the church. And by proposing this, like you were talking about, see, Troy area, and the parish covers all Troy area, that is from fourteen mile road up to where St. George Church is. So, all this side of De Quinder, say, yeah, west of De Quinder, up to St. George Parish, all these are parishioners of St. Joseph. When people are coming to the church from westbound, not necessarily they're coming from Sterling Heights or other suburbs, but they are attached to this parish, so they come along down. De Quinder, make a turn, and that is the only one entry point for them. So, if that becomes more to accommodate those people coming from along De Quinder and to enter there, and this one will attract, observe more people going in to fill those empty parking spaces there at the back where people are leaving earlier, I think we are minimizing the problem.
Any more questions from the board?
Comment?
Okay. Well, thank you, Monsignor. Mr. Courtney, you had a comment?
Yeah. Originally, or quite a while ago, I had asked if they had considered that eastern being improved exit with two lanes going out, turning the in-out lanes into just in. And I gather now from the conversation that it really has not been considered. And I think that they ought to at least talk to a traffic engineer about doing that. And as far as wrapping around, I can see people picking up. All they do is wrap around the building and pick up, just the same way as they do now to drop off or pick up.
Correct.
But I would like to see them do some checking with a traffic engineer. If that's not feasible, then run the road down by Round Tree. It doesn't matter. But if the other is feasible, then you don't have to disrupt anybody else.
Yes, I closed the public hearing. Yes, the public hearing's closed. All right, the board, what is the wishes of the board, this request?
I just wanna make one comment. Now, I, again, I wanna echo, I think that we're all trying to help whatever we can. And there's no question in my mind about that. But frankly, I think it was unanimous on the planning commission that we felt that there should be a traffic engineer involved. And it was unanimous that we felt that this was not going to be the solution to the problem. And I can only tell you that was based on what my observation was, so. And I really sincerely hope that we can help them in any way we can. I feel that they certainly are excellent neighbors. And, you know, we really should really do whatever we can to improve that situation for them. And certainly, I appreciate the police department, their involvement and spending the time coming out. That's my big speech. Thank you very much for the.
I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed, so we're all done with the public comments. So, the board has to take action one way or another on this, unless the board wants to reopen it. So, it's, Mr. Bartnik, did you have a motion or?
I was going to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, and regretfully, but I would make a motion to deny the variance, that the preliminary findings are that this particular driveway at the western edge causes an adverse effect on the properties in the immediate vicinity. And I think I would base that, the special findings, that the petitioner has not demonstrated a practical difficulty. I'm sorry, I guess that's not necessary for this particular motion. Making this the simple motion, the preliminary findings, based on the testimony and the statements and the exhibits and the discussions that we've had, that's my motion.
Second to the motion.
I second it.
Mr. Neal seconds it?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table the item to give the petitioner an opportunity to have a traffic study conducted.
There's a motion to table this item until the petitioner could get a traffic study conducted on site? Mr. Clark, were you seconding that?
I'll second it, but to the motion creator, I would ask table until when? I'll second it, but to the motion creator, I would ask table until when?
I would think two months should be sufficient to have a traffic study.
So till our June meeting, then? Is that what your suggestion is? Okay.
And if that isn't sufficient at that time, I'd be...
Mr. Chairman, committee's inquiry of city management.
Mr. Evans?
At the May meeting, May 17th, June is June 21st.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Question of city management. It's, as far as, you know, giving them two months, is that, would you consider sufficient in the light of the fact that this might be an imposition, you know, on them? I don't have any practical experience or knowledge as to if, A, they want to even consider speaking to a traffic engineering firm, and/or what that time window is, and the other moving parts in that process. I'm just curious.
You know, I'm not sure. And in my mind, if I could possibly offer a suggestion, Mr. Courtney, I know they've already asked for one postponement. Time is of the essence. Perhaps we can postpone them for a month, in case this study is done. And they get an... That way, and of course, if they, if it takes them longer to do that, they can always request that the board postpone them to a different date. Possibly that might be one way to approach this, not knowing how long it may take to get the study done.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
So it sounds like the motion is to postpone until the May meeting, then?
So that's, I would consider that a friendly change, as the second to the motion, if that's okay with my colleague and friend?
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good.
The motion, then, is on the table, is Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I'd like to... Is there, it does, do we have to have a date certain? Because actually, you don't, we don't know how quickly they could respond, or how quickly, although, you know, everybody's so busy right now.
If we don't have a date certain, we have to re-advertise. Basically, they have to reapply.
That's why I'm saying, I... Do you have to re-advertise, even if...
Yes, because basically, we advertise that there's going to be a public hearing here. People showed up, people are going to watch it on TV. And if we postpone it to a date uncertain, how are we going to let anyone know of when that is?
Okay.
And if the May meeting isn't sufficient time, we can always go another month at that point.
Okay. The motion in front of us, then, is to postpone action on this item until our May meeting, or we prepare for the roll call.
Mr. Neal?
No.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
No.
Yes.
Which one?
I thought you said Courtney, I'm sorry.
Bartnik.
Bartnik, yes.
On this, it rotates. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
That's five, yes, two, no.
This is postponed until next month. I would indicate, though, from, based upon what I'm hearing from my colleagues here, that I would suspect that it's unlikely that we are going to go in the direction of approving a road along the property. I think it's almost unanimous that the board is concerned about that as an alternative. We're looking at other things that would accommodate the traffic situation on Big Beaver, the concerns of St. Joseph, without impinging upon adjoining properties. So I think that's the direction the board is going to go in. But we want to give St. Joseph the opportunity to explore some other solutions that would accommodate the traffic situation, without impinging upon adjoining property owners. Any further comments? And if any board members feel I didn't express your sentiments correctly, feel free to pipe up now. Okay, we are done with this item. Onto the next one. Before we go to the next item, does the board want to continue forging ahead, or do you need a short break?
Short break.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, and then come back to cover the last couple of items on the agenda. of items on the agenda. Any more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just starting off, it was incorrectly indicated in the agenda. This is a variance request in the title, but is actually a permission which is a lesser standard. So we have comfort level in proceeding with this. The property is located on Mapleon Road, essentially in the west side of the road. That area is known as the Motor Mall, is northwest of Crooks Road and Maple Road intersection. The property is zoned M1 light industrial. Properties to the north, south, and east are also zoned the same way. Property to the west is zoned light industrial, also multiple-family residential. The subject property is the Cadillac dealership, and they are asking for permission to place this temporary sales trailer on the site while their permanent building is undergoing renovations. This is the location where they want to put it, in the parking lot, just south of their existing building. The trailer measures 56 feet wide, excuse me, 60 feet wide by 24 feet. And the ordinance does allow the Board of Appeals the ability to grant permissions for these types of structures for up to a two-year period.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any questions for Mr. Evans from the board? Mr. Bartnik.
Just the terminology, the correct terminology, this is not a variance request.
Right, it's a permission.
Permission, thank you. And for up to two years?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Strad, did you have any questions from the board? Is the petitioner present? Come on up and sign in. Sorry you got placed on the agenda for tonight's meeting when we made you stick around long. Hopefully, you get paid overtime.
No problem. I resigned in earlier, so I'm ahead of the game there. My name's Sam Gendler from the Suburban Collection. Not Timothy Leroy is on the agenda. But I put the packet together and coordinated the temporary sales trailer.
Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Clark, did you have one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. How large of a trailer? How close would it be to the, to the road? How long?
The size is 60 by 24.
And, I mean, like, how many people could that accommodate as far as, like, sales stations and so forth? Compared to your normal selling floor, I imagine it's much smaller.
Yeah, it's seven salespeople we have in there, plus a porter for moving cars around. Oh, we have a, the way it's, the floor plan is, there's, there's four offices on either side, two and two. And then there's an open area in the middle where we have sales consultant desks. As far as the distance from the road, it's about 50 feet from the building. I don't have an exact distance from the road, but it, it's pretty much in the, the area where we currently have our used car inventory. So it's, it's not right on the road. It's, it's back a ways, as, as Mr. Evans put on the, on the diagram there.
Mr. Clark, I can give you an approximate dimension of the aerial in just a moment if the board wants to proceed, and I'll answer that question for you as to the approximate distance from the road there.
Any questions while Mr. Evans is looking there? Mr. Neal?
Establishing this, I assume you're going to, in addition to the excess ramp, there'll be some temporary accessible parking spaces designated out front of it?
Yeah, on the west side, if, where the blue circle is, if you, if you can envision that being where the, the temporary sales office is, there's parking to the west of it. We've got cars cleared out of that area for the construction and for the, for the temporary sales office. So there'll be parking to the, to the west of there. We'll have inventory, as you can see, to the east of there. And then there'll be a lane, the 1814 is suburban Hyundai. So there'll be a lane coming through, coming off Mapleon towards 1810, or what is, is labeled there as 1808. And then there'll be a, a traffic flow in front of the, the temporary sales trailer and the, the lane in front of suburban Hyundai, 1814.
You're taking, should we be setting up, what, electric and sewer temporarily for this?
Yeah, there, there's a self-contained bathroom with what they guess they call potable water. So for washing hands, then we'll also have drinkable water there. And electrical and, and data coming through.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question for City. May I ask that?
Sure, go ahead.
In order for us to give this permission, Mr. Evans, I take it all the other building ordinance-related issues have already been addressed or would be addressed?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so this is, that's all?
Right, they've met with the building department and, yes.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, along that note, you don't even have to find a practical difficulty on this one. It's just a straight permission because it's temporary for two years.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions? Mr. Bartnik.
Since you're selling Cadillacs, I take it you want to have a real nice building. So the estimate of time of having the trailer out there is going to be what? Is there any estimate?
It really depends on the, the, the time that the construction takes on the main building. But we're estimating, hoping to have that done by February of '12. So less than a year, less than 12 months.
Major renovation?
It's, yeah, it's a major undertaking. We just did a renovation in Ann Arbor where we actually split the showroom and tried to do the renovation while operating out of the same building. And it's just better to get everybody out. It hurts the business, but it's, it's just, it's safer, it's cleaner, and it's quicker that way.
Any more questions? Mr. Evans, did you happen to find the information that Mr. Clark requested?
Yes. On the overhead here, drawn a line here, and that line measures, the first chart, 166 feet. So roughly 150, 160 feet from the edge of the road along that line.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Clark.
Do we require a public hearing on, what is it called, special permission?
It's, it's just permission, and yes, you can have a public hearing. It should be part of the meeting.
Well, unless there's more questions for the petitioner, we'll have you take a seat, and then we'll open the public hearing and...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to address the board on this permission request? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and indicate we have one letter in support of the permission. And Mr. Clark?
I'd like to make a motion, but if I inquire of City staff, would this require, for approval? Would it require just a simple motion of support? Or do, like, I know there, there does, do I need to read some preliminary findings regarding the permission?
No, you can go ahead and make your, a short motion, just granting permission, and you're, you should be all set.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve the petitioner's request.
Is there a second for the motion? Mr. Fisher seconds it. Any discussion on the motion?
Just one question.
Yes, Mr. Courtney.
Was the request for one year? If it was, I think we should make it longer, because I haven't seen too many construction projects that end on time.
The application cover letter indicates that they would hope to have...
By March 1, '12.
Yeah, by March 1. If you're, that's what the application says.
I think we should go with two years and...
So is your motion for two years then?
I'm sorry, who was the, Mr. Chairman, who was the seconder?
Mr. Fisher.
Is that a meaningful two?
Two years. Okay.
It's fine with me as well.
Motion on the table for the board is then for two years. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready for the roll call.
That's Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Strad.
Yes.
Bartnik.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Courtney.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Motion passes. You have your permission. Q. The last item on the agenda is a variance request from Alejandro M. Nagoy for M. Nagoy Construction, 4951 Somerton Drive. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located in a residential neighborhood on the south side of Long Lake Road, west of Rochester Road. The property and all surrounding properties is a zoned, single-family residential, R1C. The subject matter involves a variance, setback variance for, in addition to the house, in this drawing, we have Somerton on the right-hand side. What they're proposing to do is put an add-on, excuse me, add-on to the house, and they're going to need a setback variance from the rear property line. This is the pictures of the add-on, as indicated in your packet. The ordinance requires a 40-foot rear yard setback, and if they're successful tonight, the, the project will have just under a five-foot setback, excuse me, a 35-foot setback. So they need a five-foot setback to the rear yard requirement to be successful here tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Evans? Mr. Bartnik?
Is there any, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Has there been any communication from the swim club immediately to the west?
I haven't seen any.
And everybody's been notified publicly?
Yes, everyone within 300 feet, yes.
Thank you.
And the swim, follow up with Mr. Bartnik's question, the swim club is essentially the neighbor to the rear that would be affected by the setback.
They are adjacent. That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? I'm sorry.
Was there communication or not?
No, no, none from the swim club. We're sorry about that. Any more, more questions for Mr. Evans? Seeing none, we'll call up the petitioner to present their information to the board. Now you can speak to us.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Andy Nagoy. I'm the one that hired to do the job.
Okay, all right. Any questions for the petitioner?
Sign in.
Yes, be sure to sign in.
I did.
Okay, good. Seeing no questions, you can have a seat.
Thanks.
And we will open the public hearing. Anyone that would like to address the board on this variance request? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll indicate we have two letters in support of the variance request. Anyone on the board that would like to make a motion? Mr. Bartnik, you have a motion?
Why is it always me? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would make, I would move to grant the proposed variance. It is not contrary to the public interest. It does not permit the, the proposed variance does not permit the establishment of a prohibited use. It is not going to cause any adverse effect to the properties in the immediate vicinity or zoning district, and it relates, relates only to the property described in the application. For the special findings, the public health, safety, and welfare will not be negatively affected.
Is there a second? Mr. Courtney seconds the motion. Any discussion from the board or questions? Seeing none, we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Bartnik.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Strad.
Yes.
Get in.
Motion passes. You have your variance. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is communications. I don't believe we have any communications, anything from the, Mr. Evans or Ms. Lancaster?
Nothing.
Okay. Next is public comment. Anyone would like to address the board at this moment on any issues? Seeing none, we'll move on to miscellaneous business. The only miscellaneous business I'm aware of is I believe next month we have the elections for the officers of the board.
Yes.
Our normal board meeting in May is the election, so keep that in mind and begin your campaigning.
Send you all the sign ordinance.
Yes. Yes, no signs on the front lawn of City Hall. Any further miscellaneous business to come in front of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Bartnik.
I know we have all been notified that there's a new ordinance, and the chair had inquired of the city staff whether there was a possibility of any kind of a workshop or a presentation. And I'm wondering if that's something that could be done prior to the meeting, because the next meeting, we would be operating under the new ordinance.
Good question.
Something we could talk about.
I think it's something we can work out. At minimum, we can give an executive summary, and I can at least go over, at least what I thought about initially would be what's different with the specific zoning board of appeals responsibilities under the new code as the old code. And if the responsibilities are different, what things additionally, or the things they don't do anymore, where did those things go in the code? Just so you know where certain things went, because there are more administrative approvals now in the code. So we could do a primer on that.
Is that something you could do in, in writing and send off to us, or should we try to have a meeting, some kind of a meeting or a workshop prior to our April, our May meeting?
Let me give that some consideration. I, I certainly think that anything I speak about can be written. I don't think that's a problem. Just trying to think of how I'd coordinate, if we would do a, maybe a study session, call a study session or something. And then I want to make sure that staff is prepared and that we notify the Open Meetings Act, or however else we're supposed to notify people, that we're going to have a study session before the meeting. Just to take the temperature of the board, if we had a study session, say an hour before, at 6:30 for the May 17 meeting, is that something everyone would be open to? Or do you want to get back to me on that, or if there's a different way?
It's fine with me. I'm not sure.
That would be fine with me.
Meet here at 6:30, have a study session, and be pretty, you know, public if they wanted to come, and, you know, be pretty informal compared to our meetings, and take it from there. Is that, is that reasonably okay with everybody here?
Is that a definite?
We can pencil it in.
Thank you.
Okay.
You think?
Go ahead, Mr. Strad.
Yeah, do you think you could, Paul, give us, on the computer, the rundown of how it operates, the program itself?
The, how the zoning ordinance operates?
Yeah.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I'll see if I can get Brent in here as well, and maybe he, we'll, we'll talk about the Board of Appeals stuff, and he can give a general briefing on how, how the...
Oh, you can do it online.
Works.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll do it over here.
Yeah. But, you know, have them demonstrate how it's done, because it, it really is great.
What Tom's referring to is the way you can manipulate and move around in the ordinance electronically to page through and get to certain areas as opposed to, you know, like what I'm doing here on the screen, I'm scrolling through, you know? There's a lot of links to zoning ordinance, and they're really trying to make it user-friendly. And we've got to hook up with Carlisle Warman that, as we proceed, they'll add more links or do more stuff to it that we need. Hey, if you guys could perhaps set it up so these two pages could show. But we can get more into that next week.
You know, statuses on that, are the links all done?
Well, I don't know if they're all done. It seems like they're all done. But to be honest, if we need more, we're going to put more in, you know? Or if they need to be linked somewhere else or, or patterned a different way.
Right.
And part of that, you know, they've asked for our feedback. How does this work? You know, how's it work for you guys? What do your customers say when they use it? Well, the customer's having a chance to use it, so.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Any more miscellaneous business? Seeing none, just mentioned our welcome Ms. Lancaster to our meetings, and we normally don't go these long, so.
That's all right. We'll start with the long one and then work our way down.
Work our way down.
That'll be a good way to do it.
Actually, we did this special just for you.
Thank you.
Did you have something?
No, I just want to thank you. I know I was supposed to, I talked to Paul and helped him be, but I was supposed to present my case because of postmortem. Unfortunately, the engineering, engineer guy I'm working with, he is going through, his family's going through some difficulties. And I felt like this is a very valid issue. If you guys approve, you know, this really needs some time. And I think, okay, I'll have my postmortem. So I really want, I just gave you a break, right?
Okay.
And appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will adjourn tonight's meeting then.